Everyone, please have a seat. Thank you. Please have a seat. WNYC. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council Remote Hearing, an in-house hearing on the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Please silent all electronic devices at this time. Also, please do not approach the desk. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. And one of us is sergeant at arms will kindly assist you. Thank you very much for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Thank you so much, sergeants, and good morning, everyone. I'm Councilmember Pirina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. Thank you for joining us today for our hearing on tenant harassment and safety. I would like to thank my colleagues who are present, Councilmember Abreu, and we will also be joined by colleagues who are sponsoring legislation today. As we all know, our city faces a dire housing crisis. We have a 1.4 vacancy rate that's a functional zero if you live in a low-rent apartment. Ever-rising housing prices and inflation is hitting families across our city. New Yorkers are strained to afford the cost of everyday necessities. Compared to 2021, during which time the pandemic eviction moratorium was still in place, we've seen over 13,000 registered evictions, up from 5,000 in 2022 and 268 in 2021. In 2024, we have already passed that year's mark with over 14,000 evictions. In New York City, a landlord has to follow a set procedure in order to evict a tenant from their home. This court process is in place to ensure the rights of all parties are respected and that tenants are not unfairly deprived of shelter. However, unscrupulous landlords try to circumvent this process, unlawfully evicting tenants, New Yorkers, from their homes through such measures as harassment or changing the locks. In 2023 alone, 5,189 illegal lockout cases were filed in housing court, and the NYPD issued 89 summonses for illegal evictions. Harassment can come in many different forms, such as threats or changing the locks, but it can also be in the form of inaction, like failing to maintain building systems or not making repairs. This places the burden on tenants or tenant groups to fight back as the only way to have their rights upheld and live safely and comfortably within their homes. Some are lucky enough to work with legal service providers to advocate for habitable living conditions, but funding for these services are always at risk in annual budget fights. We continue to work with the administration to ensure that the agencies in charge of enforcing these housing standards are doing so within their power to keep tenants safe. This is why it is alarming to see that in the latest mayor's management report, there was an increase of violations issued from 722,597 in '23 to 895,457 in fiscal year '24. Building conditions are getting worse. How many of these are related to tenant harassment? The council has passed measures to put in place... Sorry, the council has passed measures to address concerns around illegal lockouts, the Certificate of No Harassment Pilot Program that was created in 2018 and extended to 2026. This program was created to ensure that owners do not harass tenants when they seek to conduct alteration or demolition work. Of the 1,412 buildings included in the CONH pilot program as of October 18, 2024, nearly 5% of them have been subject to a finding of harassment by a court or DHCR finding since entering the program, with the highest rate being found in Brooklyn, where harassment was found in more than 7% of CONH pilot program buildings. Today, we will be hearing several pieces of legislation on this topic that I will now... that I will allow my colleagues, yes, to speak on. Yes, they're here. And I'd like to acknowledge that we were joined by Councilmember Hudson and Councilmember Nurse. Councilmember Nurse has sponsored Intro 621 in relation to expanding the definition of tenant harassment to include unlawful evictions and expanding the Certificate of No Harassment program to include unlawful evictions. Intro 622 in relation to injunctive relief for lawful occupants of rental units. Intro 623 in relation to increasing penalties for unlawful evictions. 993 in relation to creating lock change procedures in response to illegal lockouts. 1037 in relation to posting certain information in multiple dwellings containing rent-stabilized units. And Reso Number 246, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation requiring unlawful eviction cases to be heard within five days. We will also hear Intro 994 in relation to requiring that tenant-occupied dwellings be provided with cooled and dehumidified air, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Ressler. While the temperatures out in NYC continue to rise each of our summers, with hundreds of New Yorkers killed in heat-related deaths every year, all New York City tenants are currently protected by strong heating laws, but not against the extreme heat that we're seeing in the summer months. Resolution Number 119, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, calls on the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation denying property owners from filing eviction proceedings for tenants who reside in buildings with substantial pending Housing Maintenance Code violations. I would like to thank my chief of staff, San Kardeanas, my Director of Land Use Policy and Budget, Ben Ratner, and the Housing and Buildings team, Taylor Zeleny, Austin Maloney, and the policy analysts, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, Dirk Spencer, Dan Krueb, and Reese Girota. I'd also like to take this moment to offer a very, very tearful and sad word of thanks to Taylor, who has been our housing council for the last two years and will be moving on. This will be her last hearing with us today. She's done an incredible job. Thank you, Taylor, for everything that you've done. Thank you. Thank you. Now, we will now hear from Councilmember Nurse on her legislation, and I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Ressler. Councilmember Nurse?
Thank you, Chair Sanchez. Thank you for hearing my bills. I really appreciate it. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone joining us here today. Today, we are hearing six bills of mine, but I really want to focus on about the first four bills that are on illegal evictions. Since October 2023, there have been over 15,000 martial evictions and 5,600 illegal lockout cases in New York City. During this time, we have... There have just been 89 criminal summonses for illegal evictions despite them being a Class A misdemeanor and an arrestable offense. My district is hit especially hard by illegal lockouts. ZIP Code 11207 in East New York is one of the city's top five ZIP codes with the highest number of illegal lockout filings over the past three years. Myself, my staff have probably been to 10 or more illegal lockouts since 2022, and what my experience has shown me is that these landlords, these nefarious landlords operate with basically sheer impunity. Lockouts are frantic, confusing, intense. They abruptly rip people from their daily lives. In the worst cases, tenants have to watch as their possessions are tossed on the curb by their landlord's hired henchmen. They have to figure out not only what to do with their tossed valuables, but also where they're going to sleep that night. It's horrifying to witness, and I'm sure even more horrifying to experience. It is our job to intervene at this most critical point to stop the lockout from proceeding, restore the person to their home, and ensure property owners won't even think to lock out their tenants in the first place. What tenant support does exist relies on the NYPD, an agency not designed or equipped to restore tenants back to their homes or hold property owners accountable, and nor should they be. There must be a better way to disincentivize illegal lockouts while also making it easier and faster for lawful occupants to regain entry and stem the flow of people to the shelter system. This is the intent of Intro 621, 622, 623, and 994, to create stronger disincentives and make it easier for the lawful occupant to get back into their home. What we cannot do is throw up our hands in exasperation or pass the buck. Having witnessed illegal evictions, I know there are gaps in our enforcement, and there must be solutions. I also want to note that we have discussed potential edits to these bills with HPD, NYPD, and advocates, and I thank everyone who has given feedback so far. I'm looking forward to hearing today's testimony and continuing to work with you all, and I appreciate the time you've set aside ahead of time to help us get some really productive feedback for these bills. Lastly, Intro 1037 is a basic education and awareness bill to alert incoming tenants that their building has rent-stabilized units and incentivize them to find out more information or seek damages for being overcharged. As many Yorkers are aging out of rent-stabilized units or move for other reasons, oftentimes younger or less informed tenants move in. They don't realize that they might be living in a building with rent-stabilized units. They might be paying higher rent than is legal. And with such little vacancy, tenants have less bargaining power and are forced to pay rents and compete with many, many tenants. And so, we hope that this will bring just some basic transparency and help empower tenants to find out what's the status of their unit and pay the rent that is legal. So, I just... I want to thank the chair again. You know, these bills really come from watching illegal evictions happen, both our staff with police officers on scene and still finding people have their stuff thrown out at night, not having the intervention that is in the patrol guide that is lawful for them to do to hold these owners accountable and people sleeping in their cars at night and trying to figure out how to get to housing court. Where is housing court? What do I do? What are my next steps? We want to make it extremely costly to break the law and illegally lock out tenants. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Nurse. Now, I'd like to pass the floor to Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you so much, Chair Sanchez, for everything you do, especially doing just an excellent job leading this committee, and just want to echo your sentiments about what a loss it is that Taylor's leaving us. I wish you the best. You know, last Tuesday, November 5, I was in Imeys, Pennsylvania, in Lehigh Valley, in a T-shirt sweating in 80-degree temperatures. We had brush fires in Prospect Park this weekend and in the Bronx in New Jersey. We're of a drought in New York City. The climate crisis is here. New York City keeps getting hotter and hotter and hotter and hotter. We've had twice as many days over 90-degree heat this past summer as we did 50 years ago in the '70s. And the number-one climate killer? It's not hurricanes or wildfires, tornadoes. It's heat. It's heat all across this country, all across this globe, and right here in New York City, where over 350 New Yorkers are dying each and every year because of extreme heat. We've provided heating in people's homes. We've guaranteed it for over 100 years in New York City. We understood that the right and moral and necessary thing to do to keep our communities safe in the debt of winter is to require that landlords provide heat. And now, to ensure our neighbors stay alive in the summer, we have to provide cooling. And so, our legislation models, builds on the really successful work that Deputy Commissioner Santiago and the team at HPD do each and every year to keep New Yorkers safe during heating season and replicates that same enforcement model so that all tenants are guaranteed access to cooling in the summer and that HPD enforces it. The exact same penalties and requirements that a landlord faces for failing to provide access to heat in the winter now apply... would now apply in the summer if you fail to provide access to cooling. We would create a cooling season from June 15 to September 15, and the devices, the cooling devices in people's homes would be capable of maintaining an indoor temperature of at least 78 degrees when it is over 82 degrees outside. That is the temperature at which health risks begin for New Yorkers. This will be a big change, a big change for landlords across New York City, a big change for new development as construction goes up in our communities. And there are major issues for us to work through with the state, with HCR, to ensure that tenants do not bear the brunt and the burden of these... of increasing access to cooling in their homes. That is why we've included a four-year ramp-up period in this legislation so that we can have ample time to ensure that state subsidies are in place to keep access to cooling affordable for tenants and to ensure that changes in local law do not lead to increased costs for tenants in New York City. It's also imperative that we set efficiency standards for these new cooling devices to encourage that we not... that we reduce emissions overall while protecting the health of the most vulnerable. There are... This is a complicated bill. It's a bold bill, but it's a necessary bill because people are dying. When you look at the 350 New Yorkers who die every year due to extreme heat in New York City, the number-one common factor among them is that they lack access to cooling in their homes. So, we have a moral responsibility to act, to intervene, to make a difference, to make sure that each and every New Yorker is safe from the number-one climate killer, extreme heat. I want to just take a moment to thank WeAct, in particular, NIDJA, for their help in crafting this legislation and bringing a really strong environmental justice perspective to the crafting of this bill. We've been in active communication with the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice over many months now in the crafting of this legislation. We've been in good conversations with HPD. I want to thank some of the tenant groups that we've been working with as well, especially Churches United for Fair Housing. And I especially want to thank my chief of staff, Molly Haley, who's put in an enormous amount of labor to crafting this bill. You know, this is the beginning of a conversation in the legislative process. We take everyone's input. We'll craft a sharper and better bill as we work to pass it. But we need to do... we need to act because extreme heat is killing too many of our neighbors. Thank you very much, Chair Sanchez.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ressler. And I just... I just want to echo that. We put these bold ideas out there, and I thank you, Councilmember Ressler. I thank you, Councilmember Nurse, for these suite of bills, and Councilmember Hudson, for many of the resolutions we have on the table today. We put these ideas out there because we want to spark public debate, and you know, the details are something that we'll collaborate on moving forward. Yeah, I'll leave it there. So, with that, I want to turn it over to the committee council to administer the oath, and we'll hear from our agencies.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. You can proceed.
Sorry, before you begin, I want to recognize we've joined... Been joined by Councilmember Aviles. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Sanchez, and members of the New York City Council Committee on Housing and Buildings. My name is Anne Marie Santiago, and I am the Deputy Commissioner for Enforcement and Neighborhood Services at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I am joined by Lucy Joffe, HPD's Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Strategy; Marty Weifman, HPD's Assistant Commissioner for Housing Litigation; Jennifer Leonie, HPD's Assistant Commissioner for Sustainability and Chief Sustainability Officer; and Joshua Levin, Director of the Legislative Affairs Unit at the New York City Police Department. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about Introductions 621, 622, 623, 993, 994, 1037, and Resolutions 119 and 246. We share the council's goals and are supportive of the intent of the legislation we are discussing today to protect tenants from both illegal eviction and the effects of extreme heat. We appreciate this opportunity to discuss HPD's role in ensuring the quality and safety of our housing stock, protecting New Yorkers from harassment, and mitigating evictions. Every New Yorker deserves a safe, affordable place to live in a neighborhood they love, and HPD works towards this goal every day. HPD's enforcement work ranges from responding to hundreds of thousands of complaints received through 311 for conditions such as no heat, pests, and leaks, to conducting emergency repairs for immediately hazardous violations when landlords fail to do so, to litigating... to initiating litigation in housing court seeking the correction of violations. HPD has a varied set of enhanced enforcement tools which identify buildings with significant hazardous or immediately hazardous violations, either generally or of a certain type like heat, for special enforcement programs. We have more than 900 staff dedicated to this entire process. Just as importantly, HPD is committed to educating tenants and owners about their rights and responsibilities to ensure homes are safe and habitable. With our colleagues throughout HPD, we work tirelessly to preserve our existing housing stock and to ensure it remains affordable. HPD also has a number of programs to protect tenants from harassment. Through our Anti-Harassment Unit, AHU, we identify both individual buildings and portfolios of buildings where there are indicators of harassment and seek to enforce correction of conditions against bad-actor landlords. AHU also responds to complaints from tenants and advocates about poor conditions being used to harass tenants. We issue housing maintenance violations, and we're warranted, initiate litigation, seeking orders to correct violations, obtain civil penalties, and address harassment. In addition to civil penalties, one landlord has twice been ordered to serve jail time. The Certificate of No Harassment process administered by HPD is a narrowly targeted tool intended to deter current owners from benefiting from past harassment. Prior to being approved by the Department of Buildings for substantial alterations that affect the use, occupancy, or layout of the building and owner of a building subject to one of the CONH programs must apply for a CONH from HPD. Current and former tenants of the building, community groups, and the relevant community board and elected officials will be notified of the application and provided an opportunity to submit comments concerning any issues of harassment experienced by the tenants. HPD conducts an investigation, and based on its findings, makes a determination which may preclude an owner from proceeding with the proposed alterations for a period of time or require that the owner agree to designating affordable units. Our most recently created program to address harassment, Partners in Preservation, is set to expand into new communities later this year. PIP provides crucial funding and technical support to tenant organizing groups, empowering tenants to advocate for themselves and improve building conditions. Partners in Preservation is unique in the nation and seeks to address harassment through data-driven organizing and closer collaboration and coordination between community-based organizations, government agencies, and legal services providers. Specifically related to evictions, the City Council passed Universal Access to Legal Services Right to Council Law in 2017. Through Universal Access, the city provides free legal services to thousands of residents facing eviction in housing court or NIDJA termination of tenancy proceedings citywide, regardless of immigration status, every year. Tenants facing eviction may qualify for free legal advice or representation depending on income. The city also funds the Anti-Harassment Tenant Protection Program, or AHTP. AHTP provides legal services to achieve pre-litigation resolution and, if necessary, representation in court for tenants facing harassment, disrepair, illegal lockouts, and eviction. AHTP also provides tenant education and outreach regarding tenants' rights and protections. Additional resources include the Tenant Helpline, which can be reached through 311. Eligible tenants at risk of eviction can also get access to one-shot deals from the Department of Social Services to help manage arrears, and the city uses various rental assistance programs to stabilize households at risk of eviction. Although HPD is not a party to eviction proceedings that take place in housing court and does not provide direct anti-eviction services, we play an important role in educating tenants about their rights. HPD has multiple resources that provide information on harassment and eviction-related issues, including the ABCs of Housing, which can be found on our website, is available at public events or can be requested through 311, our website itself, and the informational pamphlet that we hand out on every inspection. While supportive of the intent of the bills before us today, we would like to share some of our concerns about the specifics of the proposed legislation. Intro 621 seeks to add illegal eviction to the Housing Maintenance Code definition of harassment and as a criterion for buildings selected for the CONH pilot program. We interpret illegal eviction to be included in the existing definition of harassment in the HMC, but have no concern about adding it explicitly to the definition. However, given that the CONH pilot program is already more than halfway towards its sunset in September 2026, we have concerns about adding a new criterion at this time. The incorporation of the current criteria took significant time, involved research and careful data analysis. It is unlikely that we'd be able to take the necessary steps to incorporate illegal eviction as a new criterion for the program without disrupting the ongoing operations of the pilot. Should the program be reauthorized in 2026, that would be the appropriate time to consider and weigh the incorporation of a new criterion and the viability of obtaining the needed data. Illegal eviction cases currently are adjudicated in the trial part of housing court, which is appropriate given the urgency of the nature of eviction. Our understanding of Intro 622 is that this bill would require the housing part of the housing court to hear illegal eviction cases instead of the trial part. HPD has concerns about this proposed change. The housing part hears actions and proceedings involving the enforcement of housing standards and tenant harassment brought by tenants in HPD. Requiring illegal eviction cases to be adjudicated in the housing part will harm tenants who have been illegally evicted as their cases will likely take longer to be heard in the housing part. It would also negatively impact HPD's enforcement of housing standards by affecting the housing part's capacity to timely address HPD's enforcement litigation and tenants' cases seeking the correction of serious housing maintenance violations, conditions, and claims of harassment. Additionally, as the housing court would have to effectuate this change, there is a question about whether amending the HMC would be binding on the New York State Office of Court Administration. The Law Department will be reviewing this issue. Regarding Intro 623, the administration is happy to assist council staff in further developing the bill language to achieve the council's goals. The Law Department is authorized to take legal action related to illegal eviction and has used other levers as allowed by law when addressing this issue. We are supportive of steps that the court can take to improve the just resolution of illegal eviction cases, and the Law Department is currently reviewing the proposed legislation regarding both the increase in civil penalties for illegal eviction and the new requirements for HPD-administered tax subsidies, abatements, and exemptions to consider illegal eviction. While we try to ensure that we are only doing business with good owners through these programs, there are circumstances in which HPD needs to take action to help tenants living in distressed housing. A blanket five-year ban on our ability to provide city subsidy, a tax abatement, or tax exemption to distressed properties takes away one of our tools for doing that. Without further review and careful consideration, such a blanket approach could actually harm our ability to improve conditions for tenants. Turning to Intro 993, the administration supports the intent of this bill but has concerns regarding the scope of its requirements. We agree that no one should be illegally evicted from their home and forced onto the street. We also believe that the police department is not the right agent to perform the service contemplated in this bill. First, such a requirement is firmly outside the realm of officer responsibilities. As a result, NYPD would be required to staff and train a number of officers to replace these locks and furthermore to create a system to track the locks and keys. Considering that there are approximately 50 arrests a year where unlawful eviction is the top charge out of millions of 911 calls, the cost of identifying officers with pre-existing skills, training other officers in these skills while equipping them with the proper tools and spare key storage is great compared to the number of cases they would respond to. Second, and of greater concern, is Section C, which compels officers to take reasonable steps to identify any other lawful occupant and provide them with copies of keys to the changed locks. As written, this places an unfair and unworkable burden on officers to determine if someone is a true legal occupant. This would basically ask an officer, possibly days later, to make a legal determination about whether another occupant, possibly not related to the complainant who originally called 911, is allowed to live at the location. The reason we have landlord-tenant court is so that judges can review evidence, records, text messages, and leases to make these weighted determinations. A police precinct without access to all relevant documents is not the right venue to decide successive claims of tenancy at an apartment. The rightful occupant, who has already been given keys and access to the apartment by HPD... I'm sorry, by NYPD, is in a better position to determine who should be allowed access. Finally, this provision could force NYPD to grant entry to someone that the true owner does not want at their house, specifically in cases of prior family disputes or domestic violence incidents, of which the NYPD may be unaware. For these reasons, the NYPD has significant concerns with the bill as drafted, but as always, is eager to work with the council to find a solution and raise awareness on this issue. Regarding 1037, which requires the posting of a notice for registered multiple dwellings with one or more rent-stabilized units, HPD will need to engage in conversations with New York State Homes and Community Renewal, or HCR, to ensure that the information required to implement this legislation can be accessed by HPD staff in order to enforce compliance. Technology changes may also be required to ensure that the information is accessible to our inspectors. While we agree that it is helpful for tenants to be aware that there are rent-stabilized units in the building, such posting may also lead to confusion and concern for tenants if the majority of units are not covered by rent stabilization. if the majority of units are not covered by rent stabilization. The city will not be taking a position on Resolutions 119 and 246. However, we support efforts to ensure that allegations of illegal eviction are properly adjudicated and addressed by Housing Court in a timely and just manner. Finally, turning to Introduction 994, far too many New Yorkers are affected by the consequences of extreme heat and climate change. We must protect everyone, especially those most at risk, from extreme heat. However, we need to consider this legislation in a way that accounts for the reality of implementation timelines, existing technology, funding limitations, and the needs of our residents. Both HPD and the city take this issue very seriously. HPD has integrated measures to address extreme heat into the desired guidelines for all projects we finance, including requiring cooling in new construction and for retrofits that include senior housing, among other preventative measures. Citywide, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice and agency partners have advanced several goals to address extreme heat within homes. This includes advocating for reform to the Home Energy Assistance Program, or HEEP, to cover equipment and energy costs for cooling as well as for increased federal funding for this critical program. In addition, the city was awarded $1 million through the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for an air conditioning recovery program to start in 2025 in partnership with the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, New York City Housing Authority, MACHYJ, Department of Sanitation, Big Reuse, and the Fund for Public Housing. The city also advocates for expanded energy affordability program funding to assist more low and moderate-income residents in paying their heating and cooling bills. As a key strategy for cooling the built environment, MACHYJ and Parks have also launched the planning process for the city's first urban forest plan to achieve 30% citywide tree canopy. We appreciate that a short-term solution is needed to address health impacts now, while we focus greater resources and energy on creating a long-term sustainable strategy that works together with other climate legislation already in place to try to move New York City into the future. In creating this structure, we need to ensure that we're addressing the unique and distinct parts of our housing stock appropriately and taking steps that will meaningfully align with the city's long-term climate goals, considers the age of our building and condition of our electric grid, ensures energy affordability, and ensures the law can be enforced effectively to make sure it works as intended. This will need to be a multi-agency effort across levels of government, and we are committed to working with our colleagues at MACHYJ, the Department of Buildings, and the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, and others to ensure that we are accounting for both the realities of our physical infrastructure and New Yorkers' current circumstances. We look forward to continuing to discuss the challenges with you, your colleagues, and other city agencies who have an interest in the health of New York City residents, the resiliency of New York City's housing stock, and the effects of climate change. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today about these important pieces of legislation and on HPD's current work to support tenants throughout the Five Boroughs. We remain committed to working with you to improve what we do to better serve New Yorkers' need. We are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner. I'm going to ask just a few questions based on testimony, and then I want to turn it over to my colleagues. We'll have Councilmember Nurse, followed by Abreu, followed by Wrestler. So, to start, just a couple of questions based on your testimony. The Anti-Harassment Unit, you mentioned that their scope of work includes identifying buildings and portfolios, seeking enforcement, sending out inspectors, commencing litigation. Does the AHU, does AHU administer the Certificate of No Harassment program?
No, Councilmember, those are two separate programs, but they are both within the Housing Litigation Division.
Housing Litigation, okay. Can you, can you tell us about the numbers behind HPD's proactive enforcement work, specifically with respect to litigation? How many cases were brought in 2023 and how many have been brought to date in fiscal
Thank you, Councilmember. I don't have the years broken out, but I can tell you between 2022 and 2024 fiscal years, we initiated litigation against 95 buildings, and that includes initial litigation and supplemental cases.
Thank you. And what, what have been the majority of topics or complaints that have driven these 95 buildings to be identified by HPD?
Again, thank you, Councilmembers. So generally, we initiate litigation based on maintenance conditions and speaking with tenants at these buildings regarding how they are faring with the landlord in terms of obtaining repairs.
Do you want to follow up?
Anything?
I would just add that we do have a data model, which we are constantly updating and looking to for the bad actors, who we target through the Anti-Harassment Unit. We also take referrals from advocates, elected officials, legal services providers, and through that we conduct our proactive inspections, and then based on the data that we have, we initiate the litigation on usually portfolio-wide.
Thank you. Of these 95 buildings, how many have been involved in other HPD enforcement programs?
Thank you, Councilmember. So we can look into breaking that down for you. Generally, the buildings are obviously high consumers of our activities, so they get a lot of inspections, they have a lot of emergency repair in general, so we can break that down by program if that's of interest.
Okay, thank you. And what have been the outcomes of the cases? How many are still pending? How many have had outcomes determined?
Thank you, Councilmember. We've gotten quite a number of settlements in our cases. As you know, we have one landlord who continues to not comply with the court's orders and go to jail, and we follow up all of our cases with additional inspections, and we take the owners back to court if we find that they are not complying with the orders from the court. Again, we can break down the 95 buildings exactly in terms of outcomes, if that's the information that you would like.
Thank you. Yes, that would be great to have. In terms of Partners in Preservation, can you tell us what is the current funding level for Partners in Preservation? How many organizations are being funded through the program? And what is their reach in terms of tenants?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. So at the current time, there are, there's 3.6 million dedicated to the program across four contract areas. The Bronx, northern Manhattan, central Brooklyn, and then one that covers Queens, northern Brooklyn, and lower Manhattan. And these areas were identified based on a detailed analysis that identified areas with high rates of evictions, building maintenance issues, and additional indicators from a model that we have.
How many of these, and how many providers are you working with?
Seventeen community-based organizations will be participating.
Got it. And are these contracts up to date? Have, have they, are they paid on time? I've been hearing a lot of concerns about payment issues from HPD to providers, which hinders their ability to carry out these programs.
Yeah, I think this program is starting in the fall, right? It's going to be starting shortly, so I don't think that at this moment there are any issues with payments. No payments have been incurred.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask one more question, and then I'll stop it here and turn it to my colleagues, and I will come back. But with respect to universal access, my understanding is that we, we as a city, although we have promised universal access to indigent New Yorkers through city council legislation and law, we, we fund legal service providers to provide about 44,000, services to 44,000 cases per year out of the 200,000 that we are receiving, that we are seeing move through Housing Court, very slow and broken Housing Court. How, how does the administration understand our performance with respect to universal access in the face of growing evictions and the instability that this causes for New Yorkers?
Thank you for that question, Councilmembers. You know HPD doesn't administer the universal access program, so we will bring that back to our colleagues and provide an answer to the council.
We're not doing enough. And the Anti-Harassment Tenant Protection Program, I was surprised to see it touted in your testimony, given that the administration cut this program by $25 million last year, leaving many, many families who would rely on and be protected by this service without protection. So I will now turn it over to my colleagues, and we're going to start with Nurse, and then we're going to go to Councilmembers Abreu and Wrestler, and then I'll circle back for more questions. Councilmember Nurse?
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Chair Sanchez. I was hoping for the record that, yeah, it is on. All right, I'll be louder. Normally, I'm like trying not to be shouting. So can you, for the record, you all just walk me through, just so we all have an understanding, what is the NYPD's role and HPD's role when an illegal lockout, when a call is made, an illegal lockout is happening? Can you walk us through what would happen on the ground? And kind of both of your agencies' role in it?
Good morning.
Hold on, before you answer, let me just swear you in.
Oh, I did, but I'll sure, let's do it again.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Josh Levin, NYPD. Good to see you again, Councilmember. So I'll speak obviously to NYPD's role in this. When NYPD gets a call that there was an unlawful eviction, we respond to the scene, and officers then have to take account of the totality of the circumstances. There's not usually one dispositive piece of evidence that will allow an officer to make a determination about whether somebody's been unlawfully evicted or whether they're trespassing, because it's kind of like two sides of the same coin. So when NYPD arrives, they're going to look for a host of different pieces of evidence. So for example, any evidence of a type of lease, whether it be text messages, or whether it be an oral conversation, or whether it be a written lease. They're going to look to see if the person has property in there. They're going to look to see if there's signs of forced entry. They're going to look to see if a person has utilities, or bills, or letters, or mail that has been sent there. And then will make a determination, given that totality of the circumstances, because it's not really one size fits all, and determine whether this person was unlawfully evicted or not. So that's like the on-the-scene response.
So yours, so first, you're, if I'm, just to reiterate back to you, you're determining, does this person actually live there? And then in a, in a situation where you come to the scene, would you not be looking for like a notice on the door of a, of a legal eviction?
Sure, that would certainly be part of the calculation.
And if you don't see one, what are your steps there?
So the notice from the sheriff wouldn't be the only way. It's a great indicator that the person is there improperly, but someone also could be trespassing at the location. And it doesn't matter if you've been there for 30 days or more, if you're still there improperly. And so that's why we go into that analysis and we take a look at all the independent factors. We're not throwing people out on the street in the middle of January, February, right?
Do you all have a, like a list of criteria that officers are trained on? Like a checklist of making those determinations so that it's a little less subjective? Like, for example, if I've been to some lockouts where a tenant is having like a real crisis response, right? They're in panic, they're upset, they're angry, they're cursing, like not a person in the most likable time of their life, like they're having a very visceral reaction. And so maybe the officer is now annoyed with them or not feeling, you know, just like away about how someone is responding to a situation. Is there an objective criteria that officers could use to kind of punch through a list and say, okay, we've made a determination here?
So number one, let me be the first to say that an officer being annoyed or frustrated should never play any role whatsoever. Just got to say that, right? I, I know how you feel, right?
I will let you put that on the record.
Thank you. It shouldn't.
You're right, yes.
Now, having said that, what I can say is that there are trainings that have been done with, with HPD. We have legal bureau bulletins that list what the law is and what the process and what the steps are. We have a patrol guide. But I am currently unaware of any type of document that would list out any, every single piece of evidence that ever would apply, and that's, I think, also a testament to the fact that we have field training units, we have sergeants, we have supervisors. Thank you, Mad. We take criminal calls. We have attorneys 24 hours a day available for an officer to call and say, I think this is this, can you help walk me through this? I've taken those calls myself.
But you don't have, so no, you don't have an objective list, but you have a person that can be called?
Yeah, I'm scared of an objective list, because then if there's something, officers, people might think this is the only thing that could be used, which we want to enable people to have a wider aperture when they're going into this. And so we make resources available so officers know who to call and who to speak to if they're unsure of what the answer is. But no, there's no, that I'm aware of.
Just leaves it very open to discretion, is what I'm saying. But I'll, I'll move on, because this isn't really a hearing about how, what you all are doing, it's just trying to illuminate the fact that on the ground, it gets really fuzzy, and people are not always in their best moment, and so determinations that are made don't always, in my experience, watching it, don't always work out in favor for people who are the occupants there. When is an officer off the hook to leave? Like, what are the things that need to be in place for the officer to be like, we can leave this illegal, this unlawful lockout?
I'll talk in generalities, because obviously every situation is different, and also there could, God forbid, be an emergency, shots fired, or something else that's going to call resources to the scene, especially if it's nearby, right? But generally, a resolution of the issue is something that would trigger an officer being able to leave. And so, for example, officers, if they do determine that there is an illegal eviction, will call or attempt to get in touch with the landlord or a representative of the landlord or a super, have a conversation, say, buddy, listen, this, 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 you can't just lock this, you got to go through, you can't do this. And then the person will come down, let them back in, and we will write a summons or take an arrest based off what happens.
And so if you determine that you can't, this is an unlawful situation, do officers, are officers supposed to leave until that person is let back in? Or can it just be a verbal agreement with the super? Like, what's the full?
I, I think it depends on the facts on the ground. Like, if the landlord picks up and they're like, listen, I've been fighting with him, but okay, fine, we're going to come right down and let them in. And an officer also speaks to the complainant, and the complainant's like, I'm, I'm comfortable waiting here for them to let me back, let's say it's 11 o'clock PM, I'm comfortable. I think it would be up to an officer's discretion to say, this job is accomplished, and then if there is further follow-up, we will then return to the scene and do whatever we need to do.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. And for HPD, can you confirm the tenant helpline hours? So in addition to calling 911, the city has a flyer on illegal evictions that tells tenants to call 311 and ask for the tenant helpline. I have on here, and I just want to confirm with you, the hotline hours are Monday, 9:30 AM to 4:30 PM, and Tuesdays through Fridays, 9:30 AM to 5:30 PM, and 10:30 AM to 5:30 PM on Saturday. Are those correct hours?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. That unit is not within HPD, so I will have to get confirmation for you on those hours.
No problem. So I guess, well, I had a question here about what would happen if a tenant calls the helpline outside of these hours, but it sounds like you're, you're not able to answer those.
Yeah, I apologize for that, Councilmember. We will circle back with DSS and get an answer for you.
Okay, I just would put on the record, I hope that, you know, considering, at least in my experience, many lockouts happen outside of the hours, it would be really good for the city to consider expanding that to a 24/7 rapid response service. What we were, just one other question for the NYPD. We weren't able to find the, to get that granular in terms of the data. We know the date when calls are made or summons or a ticket is issued, but we don't, we don't have a sense of like the average hours. So if not today, if you could in the follow-up let us know, on average, when are you all getting like one of the highest calls for illegal evictions happening? We can, we've only been able to find the date. Just a few more questions, Chair, I'll wrap it up. So on 623, which I think is, to me, the more important bill, because we really know that the intervention on the really know that the intervention on the ground is, as we mentioned, is extremely challenging. There's a lot of different factors, there's a lot of discretion at play. We don't have clear-cut criteria identified. So on the backend, we're trying to say, you know, if you do this, it's going to be extremely costly to you, and you could potentially miss out on other opportunities. Currently, property owners who are found guilty of illegal lockouts are fined between $1,000 to, and $10,000 per violation. How often are these fines issued and collected, and kind of what pot do they go into?
Thank you, councilmembers. So the law currently allows the city to seek various violations through judicial actions, but it's brought by the Corporation Council. Again, HPD doesn't have a role in the litigation for illegal eviction, or eviction in general. The Law Department would be happy to meet with you and your team.
Okay, but do you have a general sense?
I don't.
Okay, no problem. Do you think that a property owner who illegally locks out one of their tenants should benefit from city subsidies, or tax exemptions?
Thank you for that question. I think across the board, what we would say is that our primary responsibility is protecting tenants. So while we want to do as much as we can to ensure that bad actor owners are not benefiting from HPD programs or other city subsidies, at the end of the day, we are primarily focused on making sure, when push comes to shove, that we are protecting tenants wherever we can. So we want to have the tools that we need in our toolkit, but we share the same values, and we're very focused on making sure that we go after bad actors with all of the tools that are available to us.
Okay. And just as we kind of talked about in our conversation ahead of time, I do think with this bill, we could look at some thresholds or layers to build in, so that folks who are frequent flyers, or who are repeatedly found guilty of this, I don't have the, it's hard to get that, that data from just like the public end. So I'd love to work more with you all on that, or the Law Department, or whoever I need to be pointed to. But thinking about ways to, to build in some layers. I agree, like a blanket situation might not work, but there might be people who we should not be subsidizing, and find ways to, to permanently make some of those units affordable.
We'd be happy to continue that discussion.
I don't know if the Chair asked this, but I'll just ask it again, because I can't remember. Did you say where illegal evictions and lockout most commonly occur? Are they in bigger multifamily rentals, small families with a rental unit? What are the most common types of housing stock where these are happening?
Thank you, councilmember. I don't think that question was asked before.
Okay.
And I know that there is an illegal eviction lockout group across city agencies that is looking at the data. I do not have that data, though, so again, I apologize, but we can look at what information they have. I am not sure that that is a distinction that they've made in their research, but we can look and provide you with an answer.
Okay. And to your knowledge, are there any specific landlords or companies that are serial illegal evictors?
Again, I'm not involved in the data analysis there, but we will certainly circle back with that team to find out what they have identified as a prevalent either actor, or, as you asked, a location type of building.
That would be great to, to get, to get that data in the follow-up, and I'll follow up with the Chair to send over some questions.
And I'll just note on our data work on, on these issues, sometimes it can be difficult to parse out, particularly by building type. We see owners of all kinds these days owning buildings of all kinds, so we don't always see those patterns. We're always really aggressive whenever we're looking at any of these issues, and trying to identify, how do we understand trends, et cetera. But sometimes we do see that they're not always easy to parse out because of the, the variance in our, in our housing stock.
Okay. And sorry, the last thing, which someone from my staff flagged, that we're not, maybe we're thinking that maybe there might be a misinterpretation of 622. You know, our amendments to the law wouldn't require all illegal lockouts to be in the HP part of Housing Court, but the bill says that the housing part of the Civil Court may not deny an application for relief, including restoration of possession. So we'd like to, to follow back up with you. I know we were kind of like not sure, but we'll continue to work and clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, councilmember Nurse. I just have one clarifying question, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Abreu. Mr. Levin? Levine?
Levin.
Levin? Okay, thank you. Levin. You, you were talking about, you said there's not a set checklist in, in response to Councilmember Nurse, but you're talking about taking, officers taking into account the totality of circumstances to determine whether an illegal eviction has occurred. What do the officers then do with this information?
So I do want to just step back and say one other thing. I just want to clarify. We're, we don't like making a very solid checklist, that you have to have this or that, because we don't want officers to not be able to take action in enforcement if one of those things isn't there. I just want to make sure. Okay, now, back to your question, Chair. What do they do with the information? They gather it, and then they have to do an assessment about whether they believe every single element of the individual crime has been met. So in other words, does the person have a right to be there? And have they been either affirmatively or constructively evicted, right? Affirmatively, like lock the door, but constructively would be turn the gas off, there's no heat. Well, I didn't lock you out, but you've been constructively evicted, right? Because you have the right to a full domicile and all the things that come with it. So officers will gather all that information, they will make a determination. If they need, they will speak to a sergeant or a supervisor, they will call legal, and they will ask us, hey, I got this, this, and that. We'll do case law research, et cetera, and then provide them with an idea of what the outcome could be.
So this is information that, that is then shared with the prosecutors? The, the officers don't issue anything themselves?
When you say issue anything, and there's
Summonses?
You could do a summons, or you can do an arrest based off unlawful eviction. And that's enshrined in the patrol guide. But yes, when we take enforcement action in compliance with the discovery laws, we preserve every one of the pieces of evidence that helped us reach that conclusion about probable cause. And so, for example, if the tenant says, listen, I got this, I got these text messages from him that are saying, yeah, you can start occupancy on February 1st. Body warrant is on from the minute, right? Officers go to begin an investigation or engage in, in police duty. And so you'll see, I've watched body, you'll actually see the text messages, that's the way to preserve it. We also instruct officers, take a picture of it, have the victim send you a screenshot, because we want to preserve this universe of information, which we then hand over to the Law Department, I believe, actually prosecutes it. I'll double-check that.
Got it. Not, not the district attorney?
Yeah, let me double-check that, but I believe, yes.
Okay. No problem. Thank you, thank you so much. While you double-check that, councilmember Abreu?
Thank you, Chair Sanchez, and thank you, Councilmember Nurse, for your amazing four bills. I, I kind of want to go back to the question about not having a criteria or a checklist. I'm just curious to know, like, why, why is the, why are you against it?
Against isn't the right word. What I tried to explain earlier is that if you make things in black and white, you could lock an officer into thinking, I have to have these things, or I can't take action.
But we can, can we explain to them that these are factors that they should be looking at? But the presence or the lack thereof doesn't mean it's dispositive as to whether or not it's a lockout. We, we, we want our, you know, we want folks to be able to go in there and be able to look for certain things. Doesn't necessarily mean that if they don't find it, that this is not a case, or that this is not a case of an illegal lockout. It doesn't, it shouldn't indicate a positive or negative, it's just things that says, you should look at these factors.
Yeah, definitely, that's done. We have lists of things to look at, like, for example, in recruit training, it's orally done.
Can, can we get that list?
Yeah, sure, I'll follow up.
Okay, because that's, all right, that, that makes sense, because the stuff about whether it's present or not, that's like getting to a legal case. I don't expect our officers to be assessing the merits of cases, but I do want them to go in there with the information that they need. Second, on Intro 1037, I understand that HPD testified that postings may lead to confusion and concern for tenants if the majority of units are not covered by rent stabilization. Can you please expound on that?
Thank you, councilmember. Yes, I, we're not against this bill. I think we're in support of this bill.
Okay.
But we just want to caution that, you know, if there is one or two rent-stabilized units in a building, it could lead to a lot of confusion.
No, I understand. I, I, I hear you on that. And in those instances, right, I mean, I feel like most tenants can just click on the link. If, if, if you're in the lobby of a building, and you see a posting, you can just go on a link, and if you're confused, go on the link and see whether or not your apartment is subject to rent stabilization. That should provide some, some clear rules, or some clear understanding for tenants who may think that their rent's stabilized, but they aren't. But I'm glad that the admin is in support. Thank you very much.
And I, and I think, as we said, you know, we need to work with HCR to make sure that this is something that
Totally. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Abreu. Councilmember Wrestler?
Great. How we doing? Dark times, but we're here. Okay. Firstly, just because I couldn't, I, I got the vibes from your testimony, Deputy Commissioner Santiago, that HPD supports the intent of the legislation, but I would love to just drill down a little bit more. Does the City of New York, does the Mayor's Office support a cooling requirement in new construction?
Thank you for that question. I'll step in here. I'm, I'll withhold making a joke about the vibes comment, but we are supportive of efforts to ensure that all New Yorkers have access to cooling. HPD specifically in our portfolio has taken significant steps in terms of new construction within our own buildings, and we are supportive of working towards having cooling in all new construction buildings as well. That is a small slice of our housing market, but it is an important step.
Right. But I'm just asking for a broader policy standpoint. I know we've got a, a good diversity, an impressive panel of HPD leaders and a NYPDer, but we do have Mayor's Office representatives in the audience. I'm just trying to understand the city's position on this, because it did appear in whatever your Plan YC iteration is now, that the mayor supports requiring a cooling requirement in all new construction. So I'd just like to get that on the record, that the City of New York supports a cooling requirement in all new construction. Tell me if I'm missing something, though.
Yes, we do.
We do. You do. Good. Okay. So that's clear. I'd now, I think, if I'm not being presumptuous, would like to ask, and this may be better for you, Deputy Commissioner Warfer, Assistant Commissioner Whitman, a couple of questions about potential costs and IAI improvements if this bill were to move forward. Assistant Commissioner, you have a long history of doing tenant advocacy work, right?
I do.
Yeah. Do you want to remind us on the record where you used to work?
Throughout my career, I've worked at what used to be MFY Legal Services, and then I worked at Mobilization for Justice, which currently is, and also for the Goddard Riverside SRO Law Project.
Great. All impressive, all great work, and I think informs the important work that you do today. Great experience that informs the important work you do today. So my understanding, and you all can correct me if I don't have this right, because this is all state stuff, and I will admit, I get a little confused when it comes to state law issues. If a brand-new air conditioner was installed in an apartment, in a building with more than, with a, in a large rent-regulated building, that the landlord could include in the rent 1/168th of the cost of the cooling unit in the installation, if a air conditioner was installed in an apartment. Do I have that right?
I will. I mean, it's been over seven years since I've actually litigated on behalf of tenants, and I'm really now focused on housing maintenance enforcement.
Perhaps Deputy Commissioner Joffe could help us here. Sorry.
Thank you for that question. So there's been some change in this area over the last few years. There are going to be circumstances where an owner potentially could collect an individual apartment improvement rent increase. There also has been a change in the law as of November 2022, so that owners can't charge rent-stabilized tenants a surcharge for a self-installed air conditioner. So, and, but that also then depends on, or has a caveat as to who is paying for the utilities. So there has been a step to protect tenants a bit more. So it really would depend on certain circumstances, but there can be situations in which if, where, where an IAI could be added to the rent.
Right. And, you know, we've looked at average install costs on an air conditioner in the few hundred-dollar range, so let's just say $250. That would likely be about $150 a month in additional rent. A dollar and 50 cents, maybe a couple dollars if, if the install cost was higher. But it's worth noting that landlords are limited in the number of IAIs that they can impose on a tenant over an 18-year period. Is that right?
HSTPA did include protections to that effect, yeah.
Three, three IAI increases over an 18-year period? Do I have that right?
You're testing all of my knowledge here. I believe that.
15-year period, excuse me. That, I'm testing your knowledge?
I believe that to be true.
That sounds right. Okay. So, and, and IAI improvements do require the approval of the tenant?
Yes.
So, so with tenant approval, you could see a $2, $3, $4 increase, something in that range, for an air conditioner device being installed in an apartment, if it was one of the three IAI increases that a landlord tried to impose in a 15-year period?
Under certain circumstances, as you're describing, others, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I have that right. And then, if I can, Chair Sanchez, one or two more questions? Thank you. I would just love to ask, Deputy Commissioner Santiago, you and your team do, I think, a really impressive job during heating season. Hundred thousand or so inspections a year, is that right? You respond to every
Correct.
Heating issue within 48 hours, thereabouts?
Currently, yes.
Yeah, that's, it's impressive. We'll see, hopefully this, hopefully we'll, I mean, I guess, I don't even know if I'm supposed to hope for mild winters anymore. If we were to pass this legislation and create a similar requirement during cooling season from June 15th to September 15th, have you considered what the implications would be for your workforce? How many additional headcount you might need to be able to achieve similar response times during the summer as you, as you're able to do in the winter?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. We've started to think about this. Certainly, there, there would need to be an increase. At this point, we have not quantified that. I think we really need to understand how this would be enforced. You know, I think we do have some concerns about the bill as written in terms of the enforcement, so we would like to continue speaking with you on exactly how that would, would play out.
Okay. Certainly welcome the ongoing conversations, and I'll just say, the way I've always internalized HPD's work, or your team's work, I should say specifically, is heating season is bonkers, and crazy busy, and very intense, and you catch up on everything else during the rest of the year. I think if we were to successfully pass this bill, it would make cooling season quite intense for you all to ensure that tenants are safe in the summer as well from extreme heat, and it would require an increase in headcount for HPD and for the enforcement team. And so that we're ensuring that there's effective enforcement against every other issue in addition to heating and cooling, lead, et cetera. So we want to have a real conversation about what those require, what those demands would be on HPD, so that we can plan for it and fund it appropriately, to make sure that enforcement is successful here.
I appreciate that, councilmember.
And I'll, I'll, I have some additional questions, but I will defer back to the Chair. I really appreciate the chance to go a little long.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. I'm going to ask a few questions, and then we'll go for round two. Maybe we'll just go to round two, so that I can, I can align my questions. Councilmember Nurse, you had a quick follow-up?
I had a quick follow-up for the NYPD. A story that the city did in 2022 around illegal evictions and kind of the crisis that was, was growing, found that the PD was issuing, were issuing desk appearance tickets despite the patrol guide explicitly saying not to. So I'll just read the, the little excerpt, it's very short, or excerpt. The NYPD made just 39 arrests for the crime of unlawful eviction in 2020 and 2021, when that crime was the top charge listed at arraignment, according to state court data. The city's district attorneys have disclosed a dozen other cases in that time where landlords were charged with unlawful eviction in combination with other charges such as assault. Many of the arrests led to desk appearance tickets, which allowed defendants to come back to court later, even though the NYPD patrol guide explicit, expressly prohibits issuing the tickets for unlawful evictions. So I wanted to know, or if not today, in the follow-up, if you could give us data on how many DATs have been issued in 2024, and 2023 also. Just because, you know, in my experience, again, and I've been to a bunch of these before being here, but even in being here, is that, you know, and look, I certainly am not interested in having a bunch of people in having a bunch of people arrested, but I think when, when you have a situation where a landlord is, has done, has broken the law and put people out on the street, and people now have to figure out what they're going to do for the night and what to do with their belongings, it doesn't seem like there's ever any accountability on the day of, which is clearly not what the patrol guide would show. And in the absence of, and I apologize if checklists maybe, if checklists kind of made it seem like we're looking for something overly burdensome, but in the absence of like a clear set of factors and thresholds and conditions being met to determine if something was, if there was an unlawful eviction or not, it just feels like people are just getting away with it. And by the way, most times, they don't even get back because they, they've, they've spent now the rest of their time figuring out where they're going to live in an emergency situation. The courts are slow and backed up. They don't rule in time to get people back in the house. And so an officer not taking action that day can render someone homeless. And so if you all are issuing desk appearance tickets versus arrests, it seems like the patrol guide is not being followed, or maybe it needs a refresher.
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar with the article. I'll check it out myself as well. I'll follow up with that information you asked. 23, 24 DATs issued for unlawful eviction, right? I got that right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll follow up for that. I just want to just step back and say one thing. It's not like foot dragging. It's not unduly burdensome to have a list. My only concern is that sometimes when you put stuff in black and white, it just locks people into that mentality when we want them to be able to think outside the box in determining whether there's probable cause. I believe those things are enumerated in our recruit training, but for, as Councilmember Abreu asked, I will follow up with that as well, so you can see that it's not like hide, it's not like we're, we want officers to know the law. We train them on what the law is. We give them the tools. We're not trying to hide the ball or not give them what they need to be able to make the right enforcement. But I will follow up on those things for you.
Yeah, it's just, this is an example of like this soft type of crime that happens, that people who generally own properties have much more wealth than, than others get to get away with stuff that other people, where in other situations, there is clear explicit criteria, and there, and that should be the case here. I do, my last question is, are trainings on unlawful evictions done within the PD or with your officers on an annual basis?
So I'll have to double-check. So we will do refreshers. If an issue is perennial and keeps popping up, we will put out like department-wide videos or have roll call trainings where the sergeants will say, hey, guys, don't forget. Hey, girls, hey, everybody, don't forget. You got to do X, Y, Z if you're seeing A, B, C. And so it depends on if the issue's coming up or not. I, I can double-check on, on that specifically for you.
It would be great to know since 2020, since I think that's where we're really starting to see spikes, or 2021, 2022, up to this year, you know, when was, when was any curriculum on unlawful evictions incorporated into a training and on what frequency? Because this is a, a growing trend, given that Housing Court is completely backed up. People are taking matters into their own hands in really destructive ways, and so it'd be, I think it'd be really pertinent to have a pretty consistent training on that.
Yep, certainly.
Particularly in like the South Bronx, North Brooklyn, I forget where the other, there's like a third highest area. Is it over by you? Maybe by the chair? So, thank you.
If I can say something in answer to that same question? Thank you, Councilmember Nurse. I know that as part of the Tenant Protection Cabinet and even before its creation earlier this year, there has been an Illegal Lockouts Working Group, working across agencies and working with the PD. I am not part of the group, so I, we can provide you more detail, but I know they have been working on developing training with PD around these issues, and that they've created a resource guide for homeowners on this as well, for small homeowners on this as well, to help guide them in what is an illegal lockout and what they cannot do. So all that information about the training that they've been doing, we can certainly provide you in more detail.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner, do you have a list of the agencies that are on the Tenant Protection Cabinet?
I think it is a long list of agencies. I know HPD is on that list, DSS is on that list, the Mayor's Office is on that list. We can get you a full list of-
Got it.
-agencies that are participating.
Okay. It's just you're not the representative, but HPD is-
I, I am not a representative for the Illegal Lockout Working Group.
Got it. Okay.
Yes, the HPD has a role-
Absolutely.
Right. Resource guides, training, various, and specific to illegal lockouts, there's a media toolkit as well. And they've done a lot of targeted outreach in zip codes across the city. So to your question, Councilmember Nurse, they really are working to, to make those very targeted in high-risk zip codes.
Sorry, wrong pipe. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So just another follow-up on Intro 993. Deputy Commissioner, in your testimony, and by the way, thank you for having a comprehensive testimony that addresses every piece of legislation. That is much appreciated. In, in your remarks on 993, some of your concerns were related to the determinations that NYPD officers would have to make in order to, you know, determine who to give copies to, for instance, to changed locks, right? The keys to, to any changed locks. Is it, is it the administration's position, or what is the administration's position regarding this action in, in general, whether it's NYPD or, or another agency? Should there be a role that the, the city has in helping to expedite people getting back into their homes faster?
So I'll just speak from NYPD's perspective. Based off the numbers I've seen, and I haven't, I don't have the anecdotal experience that, that some of the other, the other ones you've mentioned, Councilmember Nurse, but as I understand it, when a phone call is made to the landlord, the vast majority of the time, it resolves the issue. I know any one time is too many times. Anyone who's out of their house at 2:00 AM is never a good thing. But we believe that NYPD has a specific mission to preserve the peace and to fight crime, and this one doesn't feel like it should live within NYPD's wheelhouse. So if the question is, should we do everything we can to possibly help tenants who are improperly evicted? Yes. Nobody should be homeless out on the street because of some greedy landlord who has all the power, right? I just have, NYPD has some concerns about subsection C, about who we would then have to give keys to. That, I think that's a really big concern for us, actually. And have some concerns, listen, everyone talks about funding. I, I get it. But, you know, we'd have to find the officers. It's possible officers have these skills. We would have to train officers. We'd have to do refreshers and other set of trainings. We'd have to make sure they have access to the blank keys and where to store them and a registry in every single precinct. We just have some concerns about how that would operationalize.
I think zooming out, absolutely. This is, we spoke about this in, in testimony. This is what HPD is committed to doing. We're here to protect tenants. We're here to help people be stably housed. We don't benefit as a city when people are experiencing any kind of housing instability, and we take these issues incredibly seriously. What we're here to talk about today is the weeds, and how do we identify gaps in our current practice? How do we work together to close those gaps in the best way possible? And how do we do that while still ensuring that we have the tools that we need to get our job done? But this is what we are here to do and what we're focused on, and what this panel here collectively in our, our various jobs, what we focus on every day.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that response. On Intro six, well, the, I think I have the wrong number written down. So in relation to increasing penalties for unlawful evictions in particular, my understanding is that these penalties, that the penalty levels that we have today were set in the 80s and have not been revisited. So can you first tell us, just confirm whether that's true? When was the last time that the penalty schedule for unlawful evictions was revisited? And second, can you, can you tell us about how much HPD has collected in penalties for unlawful evictions versus how many, how, how many penalties were required to be paid?
Thank you again, Councilmember. Illegal evictions are not handled by HPD. Again, these are, would be under the law, under the jurisdiction of the Corporation Council, and I believe they have other tools that they might use in these cases. So we're happy to have the Law Department circle back with you on this. HPD's actions are around harassment or physical conditions, housing maintenance violations. That is what we represent in Housing Court and the conditions that we seek to enforce.
So you do not have data today on-
I do not.
-the amount of penalties. Okay. Do you, do you know when the last time the penalty schedule was revisited?
I do not. And again, the, the Law Department would talk about their enforcement, whether it's under this provision or whether it's under other provisions of code.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding Councilmember Wrestler's bill on, on cooling, does HPD or any other agency currently receive extreme heat complaints with, within apartments? Is that something that is tracked by the city?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. We do not accept complaints for it being too hot inside an apartment in the summer. That's what we're talking about, right? The one complaint we do receive is if the heat is actually on in the summer.
Okay.
And that's a small number of complaints, but we can get you the exact numbers if you like.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, just a couple of questions regarding harassment claims. Can you, can you give us, in my testimony, my opener, I, I referenced that we understand 5% of CONH buildings have, have been found to, have been, have seen determinations of harassment. Can you give us the, the breakdown of what are the most common types of behavior by property owner that are alleged in harassment cases?
I'm sorry, what are the most common types of-
Behavior by property owners.
Are you asking specifically about cases that are initiated by HPD?
And I understand that HPD is a part of all of these cases, right, through the HP Action? So do you have data on the universe of those and what, what these landlords are, how these landlords are harassing?
Yes, we do not have data on the, the variety of, of harassment claims in all of the cases. I can speak to what the Anti-Harassment Unit includes in our cases. I think, you know, the definition of harassment in the Housing Maintenance Code obviously is fair game for, for tenants who are seeking their own claims. But we would have to look through, for the most part, all the cases in order to make that determination.
Actually, I want to jump in there. You are familiar, Councilmember with, or Chair, with our research and evaluation team. They worked very closely with the folks who are working to design the CONH pilot program, and that was based, that was a very rigorous assessment of the factors that we could isolate that were really contributing to harassment and that would allow us to proactively identify buildings where that had happened. It's why we talk about the significance of the criteria so often. They were research-backed. So all of that came from really rigorous review of as much information was available to us at the time. That was now a couple of years ago, but that's, we believe that the, I was about to use a word that I don't think, rigorous, rigorousness, I think is still a word, but rigorousness of that criteria, we think is part of why we saw such success within the pilot, because it really did come from that, that, that type of work.
Got it. Thank you.
And just I can provide a little bit of, of numbers regarding tenant harassment cases in Housing Court that are initiated by tenants. So in fiscal year '24, about 2,500 cases included a claim of harassment on behalf of the tenant. And generally, you know, the tenants initiate these, the, one of the most common, obviously, reasons for that is the conditions in the building.
Got it. Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. One more from me, and then we'll go to Councilmember Wrestler. NYPD summons history, it's publicly available and includes summonses that are issued, for instance, for unlawful eviction. Does HPD incorporate this data into their enforcement programs or any of your data models? And in general, can you just tell us what kind of information you're including into, for instance, what, which buildings you consider for litigation?
Thank you, Councilmember. So we are not currently looking specifically at illegal eviction data. We do look at findings of harassment, both in Housing Court, and I believe we look at HCR. We look at new purchases of properties. We look at complaints at our own violations. We do look at some violations issued by other agencies as well to come up with that, those analysis in various flavors.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Wrestler.
Thanks so much, Chair Sanchez. And I did just want to say that I really appreciate the Director of the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, Elijah Hutchinson, being with us today, and really appreciate his great work on behalf of the city, and he's a constituent. So I'm not just saying nice things because he lives in District 33. Couple more questions, if that's all right, for the stellar HPD team. I'm not sure if this one is for Deputy Commissioner Joffe or Santiago, but right now, tenants are concerned about extreme heat. It's, we're going through one of our crazy heat waves, or maybe it's just 80 degrees on November 5th. They call 311. Do any of those calls go to HPD? People are concerned about the conditions in their home being unsafe, being dangerous?
Thank you, Councilmember. So right now, as you know, there is no temperature at which it is too hot inside your apartment. So we continue to, although as you said, yesterday was 80 degrees, today is 50 degrees, we are accepting complaints regarding inadequate heat.
Right. So we only have inadequate heating complaints that get sent to HPD. Right now, if I understand correctly, somebody calls 311, they're concerned about extreme heat. In all likelihood, if there's a, a cooling center that's open, they'll be directed to go to the cooling center, and that's kind of the city's policy at this point, right?
I think that's why we want to work with you. We take this issue incredibly seriously. We do not yet have the legal infrastructure-
Right.
-to take action about it. That is what this process is about, and we're looking forward to working on it and doing it in a way that we think prioritizes all the, the important things we talked about here today, the city's climate, well, that we talked about in testimony, city's climate goals, thinking about those who are most vulnerable, and really being able to implement this in a way based on our experience with various enforcement programs, and that's what we need to do.
I really appreciate that response, and I appreciate the constructive kind of nature of your testimony and your engagement both prior to and at the hearing. But I, I raise the question just to say, raise the point to say how lacking we are currently, right? That like our only move is to send somebody to a cooling center, that like we've all seen the reports are not open on weekends, you know, overwhelmingly are inadequate, inconvenient, lacking, like that that's our solution to extreme heat is just not good enough, right? And, and so appreciate your sentiment that that's why we need to create a regulatory structure to make it safer for people in their homes. And I'd like to ask a couple of questions, if I may, of Assistant Commissioner Leon, or Leoni? How do I pronounce it?
Leoni?
Leoni. Good. Thank you. Sorry, Leoni. Assistant Commissioner Leoni, I appreciate you being with us. So I'm just interested in your insight, in your role as the Chief Sustainability Officer at HPD. You know, one of the tensions in this bill, right, is that we desperately want to keep people safe in extreme heat. That's the kind of guiding focus. We also don't want to exacerbate our climate challenges, right? And so are you seeing improvements in air conditioning devices that are less carbon-intensive, cooling approaches that you think are more sustainable, and that are the kinds of things that you think we should be focusing on or incentivizing either in this legislation or just more broadly?
That's an excellent question and not an easy one to answer.
Fair.
I think in your opening statement, you did talk about specifically efficiency standards and making sure all the pieces are in place for this kind of bill to work. I think at best, right, an outcome aligns with all the climate goals of the city, right? Low-efficiency equipment that functions and is effective and efficient. Right now, I think to your point, we're not there with the equipment that's on the shelf and ready to deploy today. We also have some policy challenges around cost shifting and paying for utilities. I think that's, I think we all see that changing rapidly as a result of the city's ambitious climate goals. Local Law 97 is driving a lot of action toward better, better equipment that's more suitable to, excuse me, to our building stock that will make a transition easier over time. And I think that's what I would say, is we can see that if we can work together on a really- on a really strategic approach that allows for safety first now and an evolving regiment of providing cooling over time, that we can all get there. And we have to think about the equipment that we have now, the equipment we see coming, and really put in place something that makes this transition in the market happen so that we can achieve the goals.
I think, if I may- I'm sorry, Chair's privilege, Councilmember Wrestler, if you could turn it over to Councilmember Nurse when you complete.
Go ahead.
I need to step out for two minutes. Continue.
Oh, when I'm finished, you mean? Okay, great.
I think if I may add, that is the challenge of a moment like this. You said this is a bold piece of legislation, and we recognize that this is a bold change. And in a moment of urgency, we both want to balance the necessity of doing this and doing it quickly and of doing it well. Sorry. So we, that's something that we're balancing here. We want to discuss with you as we think about really getting this right, responding to the urgency of the moment, but also thinking, being really thoughtfully as we're in a moment where the industry is changing, where we're catching up with where we need to be in a lot of ways. And we are very appreciative that you are so appreciative of the work that the Makijay is doing. And I'm also really excited for you to get to know our sustainability team better because they are also doing amazing work at HPD, based on which we can really take a lot of learnings that we can be applying to the broader market.
Great. That's very helpful. I think that the, I'll kick it over to Chair Nurse, and I'm happy to filibuster with more questions if we're waiting on our chair. So Councilmember Nurse?
Okay, no problem. I had a question about 621, more just for me to understand how to better think about this bill in terms of the operationalizing, the inclusion of illegal evictions into the pilot program that you have. Can you tell me how long did the research take in terms of developing that criteria? And if it was done in-house or if it was like outsourced to some groups?
So there was a working group that involved folks internally and externally. The research itself was done by the Research and Evaluation Team at HPD, who I am a bit biased, but does some of the best research in this area.
I will take your word for it. I'm sure they are.
Yes. And so they led the research component of this. But the working group period actually predated both Marty and I, I think, in our current roles, or you were involved from both sides. But that actually was a multi-year effort.
Okay. And you said it was done mostly in-house with some external partners in the working group?
The policy was developed, did you, sorry. Policy was developed as a collaborative interagency working group. The research itself, HPD has access to unique data sources that other people don't. This is the same team that conducts the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey. So they were providing a lot of that technical support.
I would just add that the working group did include the external parties of advocates, legal services providers, as well as some representatives from the landlord side.
Okay. And if, I understand that this predated you all being there, but if, I would, it would be helpful to know if unlawful lockouts, illegal evictions, were at all considered during that, by that working group. I don't imagine you might have it today, but if you could, in the follow-up, just let us know if it was considered and what some of the findings were or the rationale for not including it. Because I think it would be, you know, I think the program sunsetting in 2026, although that seems like just around the corner, understanding, just isolating this one particular condition of an unlawful lockout might reduce the time needed to research. But then also, if there was anything considered in the past that might additionally reduce the time to research that criteria and including it. And then in terms of, it sunsets in 2026. Could you just expand on what happens after that? Like, is there a period right before it sunsets where you all are doing assessment? Like some proactive looking ahead and saying like, we definitely want to continue this program. Here's some tweaks we're already anticipating. Because I'm wondering if there's a way to build this into some of that proactive assessment that you might be doing before the sunset.
Yes, and thank you very much, Councilmember. So actually, we have a report due to the City Council in November of 2025 in anticipation of that sunset.
Okay.
And so that will include an analysis of the program if we want to consider, and I think we will consider, you know, strongly, including this data if we're able to obtain it in a, in a way that can be used for this purpose. So that, you know, be on the lookout for that, and we'll make sure you-
That's great.
-you get a copy of that report.
And then just in terms of, it sunsets, you've got the report, then it sunsets. How long would you think before you reauthorize the program or make it a permanent factor?
And I think the goal of that report is to provide that information to the council because you would have to reauthorize-
Okay.
-the program.
Thank you.
So, yes. So that's, that's to provide you with the information. And our recommendations, of course, in that report to suggest what we might want to include, what maybe didn't work so well, what else might need to be changed, or what really was the strong, the strong aspect of the program.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions.
Thank you. And no, I appreciate how, how much work you've done into this package. So these are, these are great questions and helpful. I want to turn it back to Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you so much. The, I just wanted to ask briefly about subsidies. And I'm not sure if Deputy Commissioner Joffe or somebody else might be able to jump in here. But we looked back at the first year of COVID in 2020, when we were all very anxious about people, especially older, low-income seniors, leaving their homes before we had a vaccine. Same older, low-income folks are the people most vulnerable to extreme heat, right? So people who disproportionately are dying from extreme heat, disproportionately going to ERs from extreme heat. In 2020, there was significant state subsidies made available to allow low-income seniors to run air conditioning in their homes. Because the last thing we wanted is people being forced to stay in their homes and then be suffering from dangerous extreme heat. So based on the analysis that we did, we found that about $70 million in subsidies was provided for low-income seniors in New York City to help cover their utility bills and stay safe in their homes. Have you all done any analysis of what amount of funding would be necessary to help keep low-income tenants safe in their homes and to help them, you know, take advantage of the cooling devices they would newly have access to in this legislation?
Thank you for that question. It is true that we view the ability to run the equipment as a very critical piece of this puzzle. And we certainly also look to some of the lessons we learned during COVID as instructive here. We, and have been advocating, I might say, for years to really expand in this area. There are subsidies that come from the state level through the heat program, for example, but we recognize that-
They're pretty limited.
We recognize that more is necessary. I don't think that we have a baseline number as to what the cost would be. More so, we have been focused on how do you think about the criteria in terms of who is getting to have access to this for how long and how you structure that. And I think that's a, that's the focus that we've had. Estimating people's utility costs isolated from, isolated to cooling is a little bit more challenging. So we have some great information that comes from the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey, but we actually have not isolated specifically the costs per household for cooling. And we know that that's very variable for a whole host of reasons. And the folks who are most trying to get at are not currently running their air conditioners at times. And so that's an area that we would continue to work on. But we absolutely think that expanding the criteria, making sure that we're actually able to get sustained assistance to people is a critical part of this whole puzzle.
Okay. I just, you know, want to say plainly and clearly on the record that, you know, this legislation requires access to cooling devices. But the second piece of what we're trying to accomplish here would be significant city and state subsidies to make it affordable for the lowest-income tenants to actually be able to utilize those cooling devices. And I guess relatedly, DOHMH did their analysis not too long ago of what percent of tenants, of apartments, of households in New York City have access to cooling. Do you guys have any updated data on that, or is there anything you can share?
So I am not familiar with DOHMH's analysis through the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey. We are quite confident in the numbers that we collect there. And we know that about 90% of households have access to cooling through variety of methods, whether it's window-installed or building-wide.
Do you break that down geographically in the HVS?
I didn't bring it today. My understanding is there's not significant variation at the borough level, which is probably where we have it at, but I can check.
My understanding of the data is that in low-income, predominantly African-American communities, like Brownsville East New York, areas in the South Bronx, we see rates as low as 75% of households having access to cooling. And that's disproportionately where people are dying, right, from extreme heat. And so if we're looking at a 90% figure citywide, but in poor, predominantly black communities, we're seeing 75% black and brown communities, 75%. That really means that in most middle-income and higher-income communities, we're in the mid-90s or above. And it's really, this is an issue that's concentrated in, in low-income communities. Is that a fair, I mean, I know I'm not trying to, you're not looking at the data in front of you, but is that consistent with your understanding, Deputy Commissioner?
I mean, I think just logically, based on how we see other trends playing out, yes. I just don't know that we have it at the sub-borough level through the HVS. So that's why I hesitated. But absolutely, this is a problem of resources, and we see this absolutely concentrated in low-income communities, particularly communities of color. What we found to be particularly concerning and striking is that in addition to that 10%, which we're not minimizing in a, in a big city like this, that is a lot of households, is that there's an additional big chunk of people or of households who are not running the air conditioner that they have because they cannot afford the costs of utilities. And so to us, that is, that has been a limiting factor in some of the city's previous efforts to address this problem, and it's something that we want to make sure really is handled as part of this broader effort. As you said, I hear you to be saying, let's handle one and then the other. We want to really make sure that we're thinking about these, and we can talk about what, how the timeline makes sense here.
Just to give a sense, the number of people who don't have access to air conditioners in New York City, that's more than the total populations of Washington DC, Nashville, Denver, Seattle, San Francisco.
Yes.
Those whole cities are less than 10%. Their total population of those cities is less than 10% of New York. So these are large numbers of people that are hurting and struggling and at risk. So I know it can seem like when we say 90% of New Yorkers, it's like, oh, well, most people are okay. But there are lots of people that are struggling and hurting and are at extreme risk if we fail to act. And I know you're not saying otherwise. I know, I really, I'm not trying to-
And it's another 16% that we have identified that are not using their air conditioner. So when you talk about the scale, absolutely, what we're talking about is a very significant-
Right.
-impact.
Yeah. No, 20, I mean, that's a quarter of New York City. We're talking about Brooklyn, right? Period. Not quite, but close. Brooklyn's more than a quarter. Brooklyn's the best. Chair Sanchez, thank you so much for the extended time, and thank you to the panel from HPD for your thoughtful answers. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Wrestler. I'd like to acknowledge that we were joined at some point by Councilmember Dinowitz and Felice, and I forgot to shout them out, so thanks to them for joining. With that, that concludes our questions for the administration's panel, so thank you so much. I am going to call up next Sarah Parker. Sorry, it looked like a D here. Sarah Parker from the New York City Independent Budget Office.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Okay, you can begin.
Good morning, Chair Sanchez and members of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. I am Sarah Parker, a Senior Research and Strategy Officer at the New York City Independent Budget Office. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm here to discuss Intro 994, which would require all tenant-occupied dwellings to have cooled and dehumidified air. Concerns about the city's more frequent and intense heat waves are real. Buildings, roads, and city infrastructure absorb and re-emitt, re-emitt heat from the sun. This makes high temperatures even more dangerous in urban area, particularly for its oldest and youngest residents. Attention to the needs of the city in relation to climate change is a topic well worth discussing. In its testimony today, IBO aims to provide context and considerations for policymakers in relation to Intro 994. I will first focus on heat-related emergency room incidents in New York City. Using hospital administrative data, IBO looked at the number of heat-related illnesses in New York City in calendar years 2020 through 2023. The annual number of heat-related cases in this period ranged from 365 in 2020 to 625 in 2022. And this followed a general trend of increasing year over year. These numbers are almost certainly an undercount of heat-related medical issues as they only capture individuals who sought medical care at a hospital and not those who sought out treatment at clinics or who went untreated. When looking at the age distribution of heat-related cases, IBO found that older adults, those 65 and older, tend to make up a greater proportion of individuals admitted to the hospital for heat-related illness. On average, they are 24% of all cases, but comprise 45% of inpatient cases, meaning that they were admitted to the hospital. I will now turn to discuss the costs associated with air conditioning and the Home Energy Assistance Program. A major consideration related to this bill is how it will affect renters in New York City. Intro 994 calls for property owner to install a window air conditioner in residential rental units without central air or an existing window unit. Per the 2023 Housing Vacancy Survey, as we just discussed, around 11% or 257,000 occupied rental households reported that they did not have air conditioning. These units would be most immediately impacted by this bill. Citywide, there is variation by community district, with some neighborhoods having notably lower shares of households with air conditioners than others. While under this bill, the owner pays for the appliance directly. Economic theory suggests that some or all of the cost to purchase and install the air conditioner would be passed on to tenants in the form of rent increases. Apart from the cost of purchasing the appliance, there is also the cost to run the air conditioner. In most cases in New York City, tenants pay for their electricity. Cost is a major barrier for households using air conditioning. Again, looking to the 2023 Housing Vacancy Survey, approximately 21% or 493,000 rental units have air conditioning, but reported they did not use it due to cost. This strongly indicates that the availability of air conditioning does not necessarily mean a tenant will use it to cool their home. Running a small, energy-efficient window air conditioner for 12 hours a day yields an increased electric cost of roughly $130 a month. In comparison, an inefficient, oversized window air conditioner run full-time could cost over $500 a month. In instances where the rent includes electricity, property owners often charge an annual surcharge for air conditioners. This is applicable to rent-stabilized units as well as public housing units and rental, and market-rate units. I'd be happy to speak further on those. Intro 99, 94 does not require the air conditioners to be Energy Star rated or appropriately sized for the space, nor does it clarify if window units are to be installed outside the cooling season and who is responsible for storage. Units left, installed year-round, unless they are specifically winterized, are a major source of air leakage during the heating months. Heat more easily escapes out from around a window air conditioner, which means higher heating costs for the building. On the topic of utility affordability, I'll now discuss the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, known as LIHEAP or HEAP. Program, known as LIHEAP or HEAP. This is a federal program through the Department of Health and Human Services, and New York State receives a block grant on an annual basis. In New York State's current HEAP plan for the 2025 year, the largest share of funds, 51%, is to be used for heating assistance, while only 4% of funds is dedicated to cooling assistance. The cooling program operates on a statewide, first-come, first-served basis, and once funding is exhausted, the program is closed. The summer 2024 cooling program that we just underwent was funded at $22 million statewide, and $8 million was spent in New York City. It is notable that the number of benefits issued in New York City has more than doubled over the past four years, meaning the program is benefiting more households in New York City than ever before. Demand for the program, however, always exceeds available funds. The HEAP cooling program works different than the heating program. The heating program provides direct payments to utilities on behalf of low-income households to offset heating utility costs in the winter months. In contrast, the cooling program supplies appliances either with a window air conditioner or a fan, but does not offset utility costs. HEAP eligibility is determined by income adjusted for household size per requirement sent annually by New York State. A written testimony includes further details on the number of households in New York City that might qualify for HEAP. The HEAP cooling program, as it's currently structured, is unlikely to provide a large source of funding to offset property owners' costs to implement Intro 994. Additionally, HEAP funds, as it's currently structured, will not help New Yorkers pay for electric utilities in the summer months. Lastly, I will discuss the capacity of New York City's electrical grid in peak summer months. Adding air conditioners in summer months brings up questions around capacity of New York City's electrical grid. Demand typically peaks during summer months during heat waves. More cooling is needed and for longer periods of time. Demand for energy usage is expected to grow year over year. Utility companies have asked city residents to limit their energy consumption during summer heat waves to avoid outages. In fact, many utility companies have billing incentive programs that reward residents to use less energy during summer daytime hours. While these are good for the environment and the stability of the energy grid, we have messaging from utilities to reduce summer electrical usage, and this is working against the goal of this bill, which is to increase households' access and use of air conditioning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'd be happy to discuss any of these topics in further detail.
Thank you so much. Very helpful testimony. Councilmember Wrestler surprisingly has a couple of questions.
I felt like there was a little shade in that from our distinguished chair, but I love her anyway. Thank you so much. Really appreciate Ms. Parker, you taking the time to testify. Your incredibly thoughtful testimony, just more broadly, greatly appreciate the work of the IBO.
Thank you.
And under Ms. Chafee's leadership, I think you all have been doing even more exceptional work. It's so valuable for us as a council to have thoughtful, independent, expert input on our policymaking process. We don't have all the answers. We certainly don't have all the answers. We try our best, but we really value the input that you're offering today and that the IBO consistently provides, you know, when we call on it. I just would love to get, I think, the last point that you're getting at, which is, how do we try? And this is kind of impossible question. So I would, if you, I don't expect any, but I'm just interested in your thought pattern. There is, there is almost a contradiction between our desire to keep people safe during, you know, and reduce subsidies for lowest-income tenants during extreme heat and the stability of the grid and reduction in emissions, right, that are working at cross-purposes. Like, how do we try to line up the incentives so that we're providing access to cooling to people who need it, but not at the expense of achieving our climate goals or destabilizing our grid?
That's a great question. So the underlying premise of this bill is to reduce and prevent heat-related illness and death in New York City. One, there, I almost think of it as a triangle. We have the question of access to air conditioning, which this bill aims to address, to provide more air conditioning to rental units so that people don't have to go to a cooling center or go to a public space that is air-conditioned, or even a commercial space, and spend the afternoon shopping because it's air-conditioned, even if they buy nothing. That's one piece of this, access to air conditioning. The second piece is the cost. How do we pay for air conditioning if we have these appliances? And the third piece of this triangle is, how does this fit in with our energy goals and our city's desire to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels and reduce overall energy demand? And so when we're thinking about appliances, we have Energy Star ratings. There certainly are air conditioner, there's guidelines put out by the ASHRAE, which is the industry standard for heating and cooling, on how to size an air conditioner for a room space. Larger rooms need more, larger air conditioners with more output. Smaller rooms do not. The smaller an air conditioner, generally, the less electricity it uses. So those are some ways, if we're focusing on the appliances, we can think about getting energy efficiency ones, thinking about how to best size it for this space. In terms of...
Utilization.
Utilization? The question is, it really comes down to cost. This premise of providing appliances is only as good as people using them, particularly at times of most need, which then comes up with this tension of really taxing the energy grid. Now, an individual window air conditioner is not using the same level of electricity as a high-rise office tower, to be clear. And the city has a lot of big buildings that are cooled almost to extremes.
Yep.
And a lot of commercial spaces where the front doors are left open. So we are...
Illegally.
Air conditioning. There's law against it, and I still see it.
Yep, totally. Don't tell Councilmember Brewer.
Where we're air conditioning the sidewalk. And so there are clearly many, many aspects on reducing our energy demand overall as a city that we need to be tackling.
That was incredibly helpful and smart and well broken down. So I really appreciate that thoughtful answer, appreciate the thoughtful testimony, appreciate the conversations that my office has had with the IBO on this bill, and really would welcome further partnership as we try to move it forward. So thank you so much, Ms. Parker.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. Thank you so much, Sarah. It's very, very helpful.
Would it be helpful if I explained the individual apartment improvements any further?
I would welcome it if it's okay.
Sure. I just have a lot of people signed up for testimony, but go ahead.
Sorry.
So this was something that came up when I spoke with your staffers, and I just wanted to clarify, for rent-stabilized apartments, if the tenant does not pay the electricity, the property owner does, an owner may charge a tenant an annual air conditioner fee. And this is $418.59 is what it's currently set at. That is not part of what gets the rent increase when the Rent Guidelines Board sets the annual increase. It's not part of that calculation. But it is an annual surcharge to cover the cost that running an air conditioner will have on the property owner. Separately, the cost to install an air conditioner, if the property owner is the one to pay for it, would be considered an individual apartment improvement, and that is, a fraction of that cost can be put onto the legal rent, that is, the monthly rent that the tenant pays. And that is the rent that then gets increased based on Rent Guidelines Board rules. Back of the envelope, for a window air conditioner to be installed and applied to an individual apartment improvement, we're talking about $2 to $5 a month. So I'd like to highlight the annual charge that we see for air conditioners in instances where the owner pays electricity. And just to clarify, there are three, there's a limit on three individual apartment improvements in a 15-year period, but those can be a bundle of improvements. So it's not that installing a window air conditioner is a singular instance. It could be part of an owner does painting, replaces appliances, fixes windows, and installs a window air conditioner. And they would submit that bundle of expenses as an individual apartment improvement.
That's very helpful. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, I will now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recording to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of tenant harassment and safety, including the following legislation: Intros. 621, 622, 623, 993, 994, 1037, and Resolution Numbers 119, excuse me, and 246. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit to the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. The first panel consists of Michael Grinthal, Evan Ma, Evan Hanley, and Justin Lamorte. May begin when ready. Whoever is ready.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Evan Ma, and I'm a staff attorney in the civil justice practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. I have worked providing legal services to low-income tenants since 2014. We at BDS commend this committee's efforts to establish further protections for the most vulnerable renters of New York City with the slate of bills. BDS's civil justice practice aims to reduce the civil collateral consequences for the people we serve who are involved with criminal, family, or immigration legal systems. Due to our model of representation, we often work with New Yorkers before they even get to housing court. Our clients are more likely to be in informal or unstable living situations, with landlords or roommates who may resort to self-help eviction. Temporary orders of protection are an almost automatic part of most criminal cases. These orders require relatively little evidence and yet have immense power to separate families. Our clients facing criminal charges almost always have these orders issued against them. And too often landlords feel empowered to evict our clients based on the order of protection alone and without filing a petition in housing court. We are often able to intervene during these situations, but of course, there are countless tenants who do not have that legal assistance. We applaud Intros. 6021, 6022, and 6023 as necessary protections against illegal lockouts. And I'll speak specifically on our support of 6022. Even though it is illegal to evict anyone who has lived in their apartment for more than 30 days without going through housing court, extrajudicial evictions are still very common, as you know. Many of these illegally evicted residents are known as occupants, meaning they likely don't have long-term rights to the apartment. Most housing court judges have determined it would be futile to restore such occupants to their homes and dismiss their legal lockout proceedings. This practice, of course, does immense harm to the tenants who are legally evicted. It also harms any tenants who are deterred from asserting their rights in housing court due to the chilling effect of this judge-made law. It empowers more landlords to rely on illegal lockouts without representation. Today's bills would protect the rights of all renters and ensure that illegal lockout victims, even those without a formal lease, would have recourse in housing court to return to their home. Can I finish quickly?
Please conclude. Yep. Summarize.
Although we support the goal of Intro 993, we recommend that it be revised to provide detailed guidance about the specifics of this new process and to designate a different agency other than the NYPD to fulfill its goals. As a public defender office, we see how granting broad discretion of the NYPD and adding armed officers to already volatile situations can quickly escalate and result in irreparable harm for New Yorkers. Many of our clients understand that calling the NYPD is often an extremely risky proposition for their own bodily safety. We advocate for a version of this bill that would empower a different city agency to effectuate its goals. Housing is human right. Although the city could go further to protect the housing rights of all residents and ensure that housing court works fairly, this slate of proposed laws contains nuanced responses to specific and niche housing issues that will affect positive change for thousands of New Yorkers. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Michael Grinthal. I'm the Director of Housing Rights at Take Root Justice. Take Root Justice is in support of all of the bills that are being heard today, but I especially wanted to thank Councilmember Nurse for her leadership on the issues of illegal eviction. And I'm going to speak specifically to Intro 622. So as Mr. Ma said, it is illegal to evict somebody in New York if they are a lawful occupant without going through housing court. And a lawful occupant includes lots of people that we might not necessarily think of as having this right, including people who don't have leases, family members, roommates, subletters, live-in caregivers after a tenant has left. These are people who are extremely likely to be illegally evicted. And right now, the state illegal eviction law is not protecting these people. They fall through a crack where, when they go to housing court in order to get restored to their homes, which is what they're supposed to do, their cases are getting dismissed because they don't have leases. We believe that's a wrong interpretation of the law, but it is the one that most housing court judges are following, and it is what's happening to people right now. Intro 622 is something that the city can do to provide an alternate path for lawful occupants who don't have leases, who are illegally evicted from their apartments. It helps tenants or licensees use the existing harassment law to bring a case in the HP part of housing court, since illegal eviction already comes under the definition of harassment under the city harassment law. The problem right now is that the HP part in harassment cases are not really well set up to work for people who've been illegally evicted. The cases drag on for months. Many judges don't recognize restoring somebody to their apartment as something that they have the power to do. Intro 622 addresses those issues, and we think that it will make a big difference to hundreds of New Yorkers who are illegally evicted every year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Evan Hanley, and I'm a staff attorney at the Legal Aid Society. And thank you so much to the chair and the committee for holding this hearing. So Legal Aid Society practices across all five boroughs, and we do see illegal lockouts happening pretty frequently, and they are a scourge on our community for the reasons that have been set forth. And it's also clear that the current framework of laws and policies and practices is really failing occupants in this situation. In our written testimony, we talk about a client in the Bronx whose trial took five and a half months to conclude. And when she did get a judgment in her favor, the landlord had changed the layout of her room, and so that was just a piece of paper that gave her no redress. So we are in support of measures to ensure that occupants have swift and effective relief in this situation. Due to the limited time, I just do want to focus on a few concerns that we have about some of the bills. So with Intro 623, we certainly are in favor of increased penalties for landlords who commit misconduct. However, we think that the prescription on receiving the city benefits would have negative impacts that would outweigh the deterrent or punitive effect, particularly for tenants who rely on SCRI or DRI, or F.C.T.F.E.P.S. The inability to benefit from the subsidies could have really disastrous effects and cause them to be displaced. For the Intro 993, we think that giving the NYPD that amount...
For the Intro 993, we think that giving the NYPD that amount of discretion in that situation also could be harmful. You know, for example, sometimes landlords quickly rent to unsuspecting tenants after performing these illegal lockouts, and so changing the locks again just by the police, I think, could be quite negative. And then the other bill regarding air conditioning for Intro 994, we definitely support the intent of that, but we share the concerns about the cost and would be happy to talk more to Councilmember Wrestler about that. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Lamorte. I'm a managing attorney at Mobilization for Justice. MFJ has been fighting for tenants' rights for over 60 years, and we applaud the efforts to focus on illegal lockouts. I want to focus on 622 and 623 specifically. In terms of 622, what we try to do is we heard there's a lack of data, so we randomly sampled 275 illegal lockouts, primarily Manhattan and Brooklyn, because the courts use a particular numbering system. Because unfortunately, due to privacy laws, this isn't data we can get from the Office of Court Administration. Through that data of those 275, around 4% of those cases ended through the futility doctrine. Just to be clear, the futility doctrine was created by the courts with no basis in law for over 100 years and allowed the courts to use speed in sacrificing justice. While it may be efficient to kick people out in the streets, it's not an effective use of the law, especially when dealing with complicated matters such as succession, regulatory agreements, or the new good cause laws that have passed through the state. What we saw looking at the futility cases is that not only is it used in those 4% of cases, but often is used as a threat to force other tenants to resolve cases by either dropping it or negotiating some sort of agreement to move out with the threat of utility hanging over the head by the judge. And the reason being is currently the cases are being handled in the trial courts, who are overburdened, over 200,000 housing court cases, 50 judges, with trials set out for months. But because these legal lockouts must be handled so quickly, they push out trials and often is something that makes the judge's job harder to do when coming managing their docket. I also want to focus on the issue of 623. We support the increased penalties, but we do have concerns like legal aid when it comes to not allowing the use of subsidies. Looking at the data of the cases where illegal lockouts are brought, on average, using Just Fix data, the portfolio is, the average portfolio is 339 buildings, or the median of 15 buildings. The average size of the building is 293 units, or the median size of the 12 units. The reason there's such a discrepancy is because we see giant buildings and small buildings, but we're talking about hundreds of buildings. And by restricting the use of SCRI, DRI, C P Feps, 421 As, that could have collateral consequences of tenants who are there and allow bad actors as a way to get around income protections and income discrimination of getting rid of a tenant who depend on that affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Nurse?
Yeah, just to clarify, those are for the landlord, not, any of those restrictions would not be for tenants. Just want to put that on the record. And additionally, we wanted to put on the record that while we agree we don't want PD to have any more power, there is, I would love to know, a city agency that has 24/7 boots on the ground. This bill was developed in coalition where there was just no other agency with the power to change the lock at 12 o'clock at night, 1:00 in the morning, when a super fails to show up, when a landlord fails to show up. We just don't have personnel on the ground besides PD. I mean, the next closest thing we have is sanitation workers, which are out by a certain hour. So the 24/7 piece, and this is why we asked about what the hours are, like when does an unlawful eviction generally get reported? I imagine it's when most people get home and realize their shit's out on the street. And we just don't have capacity on the ground. So we already proactively spoke with these groups. We would love to find anyone else to do this that actually has operational capacity in any sense for 24/7. So if you all have ideas, we'd love to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Nurse. Thank you so much to this panel. I'd now like to call up Whitney Ha, Caleb Smith, Israel Sanchez, Primo, and Diana Hernandez. Oh, Whitney Hu, not Ha. Hey, Whitney.
It's my handwriting. I take responsibility there.
It's like, that sounds familiar, but, okay. Please.
Cool. I'll go ahead and go first. Good morning. My name is Whitney Hu, and I'm the Director of Civic Engagement and Research for Churches United for Fair Housing. At CUF, we represent over 25,000 members through our 40 church partners in Brooklyn and Queens, and we provide affordable housing services citywide. I'm here today on behalf of the tenants we serve to express strong support for the Illegal Evictions Act, Intro 0621, 622, 623, 093, and Reso 246, that's a lot of words, and Cool Homes for All, Intro 994, and thank you to Councilmember Nurse and Councilmember Wrestler. These bills share a common goal, ensuring all New Yorkers have access to safe, stable, and dignified housing. Unlawful evictions and extreme heat-related deaths disproportionately impact Black, Brown, and low-income communities, exposing systemic inequities. When landlords illegally lock out tenants, they strip away basic housing rights, often forcing people into homelessness. Similarly, tenants without access to cooling during deadly heat waves face unlivable and life-threatening conditions, including death. Both legislative packages address these failures by holding landlords accountable and protecting tenants' rights. The Illegal Evictions Act strengthens enforcement, provides immediate remedies, and poses significant penalties on violators. It sends a clear message, housing is a human right, and no landlord is above the law. Cool Homes for All ensures tenant safety year-round by requiring landlords to provide cooling devices, extending protections already in place for winter heating. By requiring landlords to provide cooling devices, this legislation ensures tenants can live in homes that are safe year-round, not just during the winter when heating laws apply. Both proposals protect tenants from neglect and abuse while creating clear enforceable standards for property owners. Taken together, these bills reinforce the city's commitment to treating housing as a right, not a privilege. They both address immediate harms or laying the groundwork for a more equitable, just housing system in New York City, and would like to thank the chair for bringing us together. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, or good afternoon now, New York City Councilmembers and the Committee on Housing and Buildings and Chair Sanchez. By way of introduction, my name is Dr. Diana Hernandez. I'm a tenured professor in the Department of Social Medical Sciences at the Mailman School of Public Health. I'm also the founding principal investigator of the Energy Equity Housing and Health Program at Mailman, and the co-director of the Center of the Energy Opportunity Lab at the Center on Global Energy Policy at the School of International and Public Affairs at Columbia. I'm a mayoral appointee of the Environmental Justice Advisory Council as well. I'm testifying in my capacity as a leading authority on the issue of energy insecurity in the U.S. I've published over 100 peer-reviewed papers, book chapters, and reports on this topic and a related forthcoming book called Powerless: The People Struggle for Energy. Energy insecurity is defined as the inability to adequately meet household energy needs. It has three dimensions. There's an economic dimension, which has everything to do with the affordability of bills, a physical dimension, which has everything to do with the physical quality of housing, and coping, which has to do with the adaptive strategies that people use when they cannot adequately meet the economic or physical conditions of their homes. The pending local law, Intro 994, requiring that tenant-occupied dwellings be provided with cooled and dehumidified air is a critical step in closing energy insecurity gaps in New York City. I am here both to express my support for this measure by sharing evidence from published research that indicates a need for greater cooling access among New York City residents, while also expressing concerns that without enhanced financial support for tenants, the assurance of air conditioning alone will not be enough to ensure safeguards against extreme heat at home. There are substantial human health risks associated with excessively high temperatures in residential dwellings, from hypothermia to heat strokes, sleepless nights, mental strain, and even death. The public health literature on the adverse health effects of indoor, of extreme indoor heat is well-established and incontestable. These issues are also more pronounced with rising temperatures driven by climate change. There is also a greater need for cooling at home. In disadvantaged communities, urban heat island effects compound the need for indoor cooling while at the same time making it more expensive to cool. New York City regularly tracks air conditioning prevalence, meaning how many New York City households actually already have access to cooling. And from this tracking, we know that over 90% have access to cooling at home, except in certain neighborhoods. Among them, the highest low-income groups, households of color, renters, and households with pre-existing health conditions. As emphasized by Councilmember Wrestler, every year in New York City, high indoor temperatures cause an, on average, 350 exacerbated heat deaths. 100% of people who died of heat stress in their homes either did not have a working air conditioner or were not using it at all. In 2020, the New York City COVID heat wave plan was passed due to the swift action of the city council and coordination among multiple city agencies. The emergency AC distribution measure enabled the installation of 73,000 ACs in homes over a three-month period. The program goal was to help low-income older adults stay home safely during COVID-19 and extreme heat, supporting social distancing during the summer of 2020. In addition to the actual AC unit, there were also modest utility bill credits for almost 500,000 low-income electricity customers at around $35 per month. This highly impactful program, known as the Get Cool Program, was well-targeted, was well-targeted such that populations with the highest levels of heat vulnerability and those at greatest risk of COVID were prioritized in the distribution of ACs. I was an academic partner in the program evaluation effort done in collaboration with the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene that resulted in a peer-reviewed paper published last year in the Journal of Urban Health. And in that paper, we presented the results from the Get Cool Program, which showed that it was highly successful in ensuring that more households in New York City were positioned to access cooling at home. The evaluation compared program beneficiaries to applicants that demonstrated interest but were not enrolled in the Get Cool Program, and results indicate that Get Cool participants were able to access cooling at home compared to the prior year and also to non-participants. More Get Cool Program participants reported comfort at home. They were also more likely to, less likely to report being sick at home compared to non-participants. But almost, so, just to kind of put this in context, almost an equal number of study participants did not go to cooling centers, really demonstrating a low uptake of cooling center use. Another point of convergence was about a persistent challenge around energy affordability, particularly among Get Cool participants, that expressed concerns around increased electricity costs compared, and then non-participants faced other barriers. So the participants were expressing concerns around affordability. The AC installation, landlord surcharges, and applying for cooling assistance were all substantial concerns for those that were non-participants. And together, this shows that there is still a need to fill cooling gaps in New York City. We've done some additional work with the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Just this year, we published a paper that was in Health Affairs, and we showed that 28% of New York City residents experience energy insecurity. 30% of them are experiencing homes that are too hot. 15% of them are experiencing, are not using their ACs due to costs. And in a report that we published this year with the Robin Hood Foundation alongside the Columbia Center for Poverty and Social Policy, we demonstrated that 10% of New York City residents are falling behind on their utility bills, and 5% experience a disconnection due to non-payment. Considering the aforementioned...
I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask you to summarize, okay?
Right now. Evidence, thank you so much. A vast body of research showing the links between energy, housing, and health, there is definitely a strong rationale for establishing a cooling season during the months of high heat. However, in addition to establishing that, we also need to be thinking about reforming the Home Energy Assistance Program and making cooling assistance more robust, expanding the energy affordability program so that more eligible households are actually enrolled, considering strengthening disconnection programs, disconnection protections during summer months, ensuring that AC units are actually efficient, and that low-intensity cooling options like ceiling fans are also part of this plan, and that we also need to educate the public on indoor temperature set points that support health. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your robust testimony.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez, and members of the committee. My name is Israel Sanchez. I am a campaign coordinator at the Association for Neighborhood in Housing Development. ANHD supports the goals of Intro 994, to mitigate the effects of extreme heat on vulnerable New Yorkers. We've all heard the effects that extreme heat, rising temperatures have on the most vulnerable New Yorkers in our city, due to the urban heat island effect, redlining, et cetera. It is critical that everyone has access to thermally safe environment and cool temperatures in their homes, especially when cooling centers are not always available. However, at this moment, we are unable to support the legislation because it is not structured in a way that is feasible to implement for our nonprofit-owned affordable housing members. ANHD's member organizations are already struggling to maintain their buildings in the face of unaddressed rental arrears, and rising insurance costs, and costly delays and backlogs. There's simply no money in their buildings, existing underwriting, to pay for the new cooling systems, especially if we want to encourage long-term sustainability over quick fixes. We recommend adding a temporary exemption in this bill for nonprofit-owned affordable housing, which should be required to meet the new cooling requirements, standards in existing buildings, only at a point of refinancing or major renovations when the costs associated with the upgrades can be accommodated, and any necessary structural or system upgrade work can be done more efficiently. This would ensure that our nonprofit-owned affordable housing stock can be brought up to the max temp requirements proposed without sacrificing affordability or placing our community housing organizations under further financial duress. We also recommend committed funding in the next council budget to ensure that low-income tenants that are already struggling with rising rent and utility costs have access to programs that can help them cover any increases in utility costs through programs such as HEEP. And finally, I'd like to also state that ANHD supports the other bills being heard today, and we'll include some recommendations for strengthening modifications in our written testimony, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Committee Chair Purina Ana Sanchez and Committee on Housing and Buildings. My name is Caleb Smith. I'm the Resiliency Coordinator at We Act for Environmental Justice. We Act, a community-based organization headquartered in Harlem, has been fighting environmental racism at the city, state, and federal level for more than 30 years. My role is focused on advancing health equity by advocating for extreme heat and flood adaptation policies. I am here in support of Introduction 994 because the map of New York City's most heat-vulnerable communities bears a striking resemblance to a map of its formerly redlined neighborhoods. It's no mistake that Black New Yorkers are twice as likely to die from heat stress as white New Yorkers. It's a consequence of policy decisions, decisions that perpetuate a lack of green space, limited access to air conditioning, and poor housing quality for low-income and Black communities. Introduction 994 closes a policy gap we can no longer ignore. Now that we are in a humid subtropical climate zone experiencing sustained and extreme heat, everyone must have a right to cooling. Cooling at home is the most holistic response to address the unpredictable, indiscreet, and cumulative threat of extreme heat. The NPCC 4 report shows that heat-exacerbated mortalities are increasing at non-extreme temperatures between 82 and 90 degrees, which are increasingly frequent. This indicates delayed plans to acclimatize residents and adapt our built environments put our lives at risk. We will continue to support this bill, ensuring that it uplifts the most protective health standard, feasibility of implementation for nonprofit and low-income building owners, energy affordability, and housing stability for heat-vulnerable tenants. In our written comments, we detail the potential amendments to help directly address these priorities. Thank you again, committee chairs, for allowing me to testify on this matter.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank this panel, especially Caleb and the team from We Act in helping us to shape this legislation, and Whitney and her team at CUF for helping us to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect tenants, and really want to thank the expert insight from Dr. Hernandez. We really look forward to, and ANHD, we continue to look forward to working with each of you as we shape this legislation in the weeks and months to come.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. We will now be turning to remote testimony. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you. And the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your First up will be Hannah Mae Powers, then Danielle Manley, followed by Irene Mc... First up will be Hannah Mae Powers, then Danielle Manley, followed by Irene Max- sorry, I'm gonna get this wrong, Max Tax Santos, and finally Stanley Wong.
You may begin.
Hi, and good afternoon, Chair Sanchez, and thank you for holding this hearing today. My name is Hannah Mae Powers. I'm Health and Safety Policy Analyst at the Office of the Brooklyn Borough President, who I'm here in behalf of, and also in turn, in behalf of Brooklyn tenants. State and local legislative changes in the last few years have strengthened tenant protection, but issues remain. For example, during VP Reynoso's time in the Council, he was proud to pass the Stand for Tenant Safety Bill Package, a robust, a robust, a robust set of regulations designed to protect tenants from landlords using construction as harassment. The Council also passed and expanded the right for tenants to have counsel in housing court. And during the pandemic, the state temporarily paused housing court proceedings, giving tenants relief from eviction, at least through legal channels. However, in order to sidestep fees and other regulations, some landlords have become bolder, resorting to criminal behavior such as lockouts, shutting off utilities, and even throwing out tenants' possessions. Worse, recent reporting shows that NYPD frequently fails to hold landlords accountable for committing these crimes. These issues are particularly acute in East New York and Brownsville, where rates of illegal evictions are among the highest in the city. That's why Borough President Reynoso supports the Stop Illegal Evictions Act. These proposals clarify that illegal evictions constitute harassment, give tenants who have been illegally evicted a tool to use in court to stay in their homes, and create stronger disincentives for landlords to engage in these illegal practices. In addition to this legislation, in the next, in the next budget cycle, we must ensure that our community-based nonprofit legal services providers are well-resourced and supported for the necessary work to organize, educate, and protect tenants. For example, we must fully fund the Anti-Harassment Tenant Protection Program, lift caps on rollovers, and address-
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you.
You may begin.
Dear Councilmembers Sanchez, Wrestler, and members of the committee, thanks for the opportunity to comment today. I'm Danielle Manley, and I'm the Manager of Policy at Urban Green Council. We're a nonprofit with a mission to decarbonize buildings for healthy and resilient communities, and I'm here to submit our feedback on INTRO 994. As others have said, extreme heat is the deadliest climate hazard in New York City, claiming an average of 350 lives each year, and climate change is making our summers hotter. As we see it, INTRO 994 aims to achieve two goals to address this problem. First is to mitigate life safety risks for the most heat-vulnerable New Yorkers, and second is to enshrine a right to cooling for all residential tenants in the same manner that there's a right to heat. Urban Green strongly supports both of those goals, and we welcome the opportunity to work together to achieve them. But as others have said, there are key challenges with the bill as drafted right now, and we think that thoughtful engagement is needed to navigate them before moving forward. My written comments offer more detail, and some of these have been said already, but those challenges include, one, that utility costs are a major barrier because those who need cooling often cannot afford to pay for it. Two, most large buildings will not have heat pumps in the four-year timeframe laid out in this bill. Three, that means that inefficient and secondhand window units will become the lowest-cost option, unintentionally leading the city's most vulnerable residents getting the worst-performing equipment. Fourth, the grid is already strained and most polluting on hot summer days. And last, there are some building science and technology hurdles that practitioners say are difficult or impossible to meet as it's drafted right now. But to be clear, we don't feel that these obstacles are permanent or insurmountable, and we want this to succeed, and so we recommend four steps. First is to start with a requirement for cooling in all new buildings. Don't leave the option on the table. Second is to identify the truly vulnerable residents without AC and target programs for them today. We don't have to wait to help them. Third is to require a study with broad stakeholder engagement to navigate the issues that have been raised today, that are sometimes at odds with one another, in a city-wide right-to-cooling bill, and offer funding in the city's budget for it. And fourth, consider minimum efficiency standards for window air conditioners in this or any other future bill on this topic. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to collaborating on a path forward for this.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'd now like to call Irene Max, Max Tax Sat- sorry, Irene M.
Max Tax Santos.
Sorry, thank you.
I'm used to it. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. I am a longtime rent-stabilized tenant in the East Village. I wholeheartedly support any and all bills that support tenants from predatory landlords. There's a desperate need for stronger legislation to stop landlords from being able to carry through baseless evictions and to continue to harass tenants. My landlord, Mark Scharfman, owns roughly 140 rent-stabilized buildings in this city. He bought my building in 2005, then tried to evict me in 2007, in 2015, and just last year, in 2023. They usually slap their fraudulent notices on my door before and during holidays, then adjourn and adjourn the court dates. I'm currently waiting for Housing Court judge's decision on eviction proceedings brought against me last year in November. From March 2023, my apartment was unlivable due to repeated sewage floods from an improperly-plumbed Frankenstein duplex apartment above. This affected all the apartments in my line eventually because the landlord chose not to address it for five months. We had to call the fire department multiple times because Beach Lane Management ignored our calls and emails during the flooding and to address conditions that lasted for months afterwards. Imagine sewage coming up into your sink and bathtub, coming down through light fixtures, shorting electricity, making holes in the ceiling, streaming down the walls of my kitchen and bath, and not stopping. I was left alone with these conditions for months and months. The landlord did not address the source of the sewage flood and ignored tenants' call for help. Calling HPD, DOB, and DHCR did not force the landlord to address the problem sooner. This slick duplex apartment was created from two rent-stabilized apartments that had Mickey Mouse plumbing.
Thank you, your time has expired.
That's sad.
Do you want to summarize?
I just think that landlords have been given just free rein to bring evictions that are baseless and continuous, and that city agencies really don't prevent it from happening. He's on the list, and he's done it quite a few times, and I feel like legislation is too weak. And it, you know, he is a greedy landlord. He is, he has lawyers downtown that continuously are there for whatever, whatever they want, you know? And they will do it over and over again because it's just too easy. So you're dealing with after evictions happen, but I'm the before, you know? And I've withstood countless, countless times based on nothing. I was taken to Supreme Court as well, where they tried to overturn a DHCR. Whatever. Anyway, so I do have more to say, but, okay.
Thank you, thank you for joining us today. Stanley Wong?
You may begin, Stanley.
Thank you, good afternoon. Thank you to this committee for holding this hearing and the opportunity to comment. My name is Stanley Wong. I'm a housing staff attorney in the Manhattan Unit of Legal Services NYC, the largest provider of civil legal services in the country. We support the bills today that seek to restrain illegal evictions as sensible proposals, don't provide much-needed stability to working-class and lower-income families, and protect due process for all New Yorkers. We believe INTRO 623 is an important step to disincentivizing unlawful evictions. However, we encourage the committee to rethink its five-year ban on participation in city tax credits, abatements, or subsidies, which would likely have unintended negative consequences for the tenants the bill is meant to protect. We urge the Council to continue engaging with community stakeholders to explore the options in addition to monetary penalties. Similarly, we believe INTRO 622 provides much-needed safeguards to curbing illegal self-help evictions by eliminating the futility doctrine, a legal principle that denies lawful occupants and their families their right to return to their homes. This bill would ensure property owners and courts respect due process, as well as provide stability for the number of rent-burdened families in New York City who are unable to find alternative affordable housing in a short period of time. Going to INTRO 621, the bill would enhance the efficacy of the Certificate of No Harassment Program and give proper attention to future development as we continue to protect current affordable housing stock. We support INTRO 1037's proposal to provide for the dissemination of crucial information regarding occupants' potential rights, which would both protect individuals and bolster rent stabilization laws. And finally, Resolution 9, that 119, would reinforce justice and fundamental fairness in our courts while protecting families who often are on the other side of a stark power imbalance when seeking to have their rights vindicated. I thank you to the Council, City Council, for its attention to these critical issues that impact hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers.
Thank you, thank you so much for joining us today. I'd next like to call Shravanti Kanekai, Kanekal.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and members of the Council. My name is Shravanti Kanekal. I am the Senior Resiliency Planner at the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance. Founded in 1991, Nija is a nonprofit citywide membership network that links 13 grassroots organizations from low-income neighborhoods and communities of color across the five boroughs in their struggle for environmental justice. Nija is here today to lend support to INTRO 994 that establishes a maximum indoor temperature regulation. We want to ensure that city government needs to change its policy, management, and response to extreme heat. It needs to expand existing strategies and invest in new ones to reduce the urban heat island effect and protect and, excuse me, prepare New York City residents from increasing, from the increasing risks and dangers of heat, particularly the most vulnerable amongst us. Cooling strategies can no longer be regarded as a privilege, but rather must be seen as a necessity for the health and safety for the most vulnerable New Yorkers. According to the most recent report from the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, heat is, as many have noted, heat is estimated to cause approximately 350 excess deaths annually, with the highest burdens among Black New Yorkers, who are twice as likely to die of heat-related or exacerbated heat impacts than white New Yorkers. The report also states that heat-exacerbated deaths were more likely to occur at home, underscoring the importance and access to cooling at home. The lack of air, the lack of access to home air conditioning is the most important risk factor in a heat-stress death. And amongst those who died from heat stress, the place of death was most often an un-air-conditioned home. For these reasons and many more, addressing this problem of heat head-on and providing tenants with guaranteed cooling at home, which is what INTRO 994 would require, is the best way to prevent such dire health consequences and deaths from continuing. We recognize that INTRO 994 presents-
Thank you, your time has expired.
Apologies, I will submit a more thorough written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, thank you so much, Shravanti. And now I'd like to call Isabel Friedman.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and members of the Committee on Housing and Building. My name is Isabel Friedman, and I'm an advocate at the Natural Resources Defense Council. NRDC strongly supports the intention and objective of INTRO 994. We highlight several issues for the Council's consideration as it develops the final language of this bill. First, there can be little question that a cooling requirement should apply to all new residential building construction. This is consistent with Plan YC, which set the goal of codifying cooling requirements in new construction by 2025. Heat pumps, passive cooling, and other cooling-efficient mechanisms can be used to mitigate an increased, an un, an increased load on the grid and unnecessary additional greenhouse gas emission. Second, we need to prioritize vulnerable populations in the implementation of this bill. Black New Yorkers, New Yorkers over the age of 60, and those with chronic conditions, as well as those living under the federal poverty line, have a higher risk of heat-related mortality. We must prioritize these populations either through phased implementation of the cooling requirement or through the specifying of bill language. A third challenge to be resolved is how to ensure that low-income New Yorkers can afford to run the air conditioners they already own or that are installed by building owners. We need to prioritize energy affordability because even if low-income New Yorkers have air conditioners, the issue of extreme heat isn't solved unless they can run them. Two final points. We believe that a thoughtfully-designed bill can be advanced in a way that doesn't conflict with Local Law 97 and impose a double burden on landlords. We also believe that tenant protections against evictions and rent increases associated with installing cooling devices must be assured, either as part of this bill or through other legislative or administrative mechanisms. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important issue. My NRDC colleague Eric Goldstein and I, as well as our community partners, look forward to working with you to address these and the other issues raised in this hearing.
Thank you so much. I'd now like to call Samantha Guzman.
You may begin.
They're next. Priya Donahue.
You may begin.
Shannon Lumpkin.
You may begin.
Okay, if we've inadvertently missed anyone that is registered on Zoom, please raise, use the raise hand function to let us know that you are here. I'd now like to call up Christopher Leon Johnson.
You let all the, Christopher Leon Johnson, you let all the nonprofits speak for me. That's some bullshit, all right? Let me make this clear. You're for the city, yes. Like, that's not right that what you did, you're for the city, yes.
We're gonna need to stay on topic.
I'm staying on topic. This had to do with this, because these evictions, everybody knows these evictions are disgusting, and the city, yes, has a lot to do with the evictions, and you're part of it, Ms. Sanchez, and you, Mr. Wrestler, and Mrs. Nurse. This panel, this, I mean, this public hearing is a sham hearing. All you council members are for the city, yes, which will evict all these people out of these apartments, all these undesirables. Let me correct little clown, bald-headed clown Kevin Riley about undesirables. Undesirables mean the people that pay less than market rate and rent in a certain, in apartment buildings. That what undesirables mean, Kevin Riley, not houses' people. So that was, this is, this is all about. The city, yes, will, all y'all gonna vote for city X in two weeks, on the 21st, and all this is gonna do is displace all these people that they want out. This, this committee is, this little hearing today is a sham committee hearing. You guys are all for the city, yes, you guys are here for, you guys are down with the slum lords and these corrupt landlords that all y'all care, that all care about is get all these people out of these buildings so they get all they, all they wanted tenants in that's paying $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 a month. Y'all hate the people that pay $2,000 a month. All you guys wanna do with those people that pay that amount of money in rent is give them free food and-
Chris, do you have a, do you have a position on the bills that are being heard today?
Yeah, I'm against all these bills because you guys are for it. You guys are frauds, you guys are hypocrites, and 2025 will be the year that all you gotta be voted out, including you, Ms. Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez, you're gonna be voted out in 2025 by Mr. Cabrera. You, you guys are frauds, you guys are, you guys support this.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony today, Chris. That will be all, thank you. That will be all, thank you.
Preparing for Cabrera 2025, man.
Thank you, thank you so much to all the members of the public for joining us today. We really appreciate your testimony. These are important topics here that we're discussing, and I appreciate everybody's time and attention to what matters are before the Council. Thank you so much.